Okay, good afternoon. We call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, February 22, 2023, to order at 4:03 PM. It's a little bit of snowy weather today. I'm glad that all of us are here and Director Nelson is supposed to join us too. And we do have executive session today for roughly an hour and a half. Ms. Melissa Olson is again helping us today. Thank you for assisting us, and you have seamlessly stepped in and we certainly appreciate your assistance. With that, roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus? Director Daniels? Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Loma?
Here.
Director Mal Pakem?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Director Nelson will be joining us shortly.
Director Ott?
Here.
So we have six board members in attendance in person, and I expect Director Nelson to be joining us shortly. Please join us in a moment of silence. Vice President Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please, Melissa.
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Director Nelson isn't here.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion has been, the agenda has been adopted. Director Loma, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convene into executive sessions to discuss negotiation per CRS 24-6-402 for E Particular Matter Superintendent Contract Interest-Based Bargaining with Colorado Springs Education Association Regarding Master Agreement and Employee Benefits.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM in the boardroom. So good evening to all of you. Thank you again for your patience as our executive session ran a little bit longer. We are reconvening in public session and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. It's great to see all of you here in spite of the cold evening and the snowy weather out there. Before I get started, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, the board is recommitted to the board norms that were adopted last year, and the norms are printed in front of the board agenda for your reference and reminder, and those norms will be followed as far as expectations for the professional decorum in the boardroom. May I please have the student from Academy ACL? Is she going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Students from Academy ACL. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Thank you, students. That was wonderful. Awards and recognition, superintendent call, I turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, President Mal Pakem, board members and community. Tonight, we are excited for a couple opportunities to celebrate some of the excellent work. We wanted to celebrate publicly our students from Dougherty High School and their main stage performance. I believe we have a teacher who will accept that award on their behalf, so we're going to come forward and we'll read that proclamation, but I've changed my schedule tomorrow to be able to deliver these in person at Dougherty, so I'd love to be able to do that. So, Melissa?
Six Dougherty students, Aleah Ludwig, Reagan Ridenhour, Kayara Fullington, Emma Nightingale, Isella Green, and Cass Allen, under the direction of Dougherty Dance Teacher Ms. Emma Lepore, were selected as co-DEO State Conference Main Stage Dancers.
Codeo. There we go.
Codeo.
Awesome. Congratulations. Would you like to share with the room what codeo is for the audience?
Sure. So codeo is a state dance conference that the Colorado Dance Educators Association puts on for all students in Colorado, and students come from studios and from school programs like ours at Dougherty High School, and also from colleges to come and dance together. Students have opportunities to meet colleges, which is really cool, and also perform as an ensemble and then with people that they meet at the conference.
Great. We'll be on the news tomorrow, and so we'll... Go ahead and then make the next one.
Odyssey Echo Teacher Selected as NSHSS Class Nobel Educator of Distinction Alexandra Madsen, an educator at Odyssey Early College and Career Options, was recently selected as a Class Nobel Educator of Distinction by the National Society of High School Scholars, NSHSS. A role model to pupils, Alexandra was nominated by a student for outstanding dedication and commitment to excellence in the profession. Each year, student members of NSHSS are invited to nominate the educator who has made the most significant contribution to their academic career for the Class Nobel Educator of Distinction Award. This honor recognizes exemplary educators whose passion and devotion inspire their students to grow and develop as scholars, leaders, and citizens. Formed in 2002 by James W. Lewis and Class Nobel, the National Society of High School Scholars recognizes academic excellence at the high school level and helps to advance the goals and aspirations of high achieving students through unique learning experiences, scholarships, internships, international study, and peer networks.
Congratulations. Please, we all know that the sacrifices go well beyond just bell to bell, so. Can you hold the special award that you want me to have? Can you hold it up for everybody to take a picture of?
I'm gonna have three, one, two, three, one, one, two.
So congratulations to both of you. Ms. Madsen, congratulations. The next item on the agenda is school spotlight, and we have Academy for Advanced and Creative Learning today. In the school spotlight, superintendent call.
Principal Nikki Meyer, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. I miss your slides here. So, we have several slides we prepared for you, but really only a few that we want to talk about tonight, because we want to get to our kids and a really cool opportunity they have for you. So, we come up and we had a slide, we have a slide in here that talks about our timeline. We actually come up before you this next year for charter renewal, which is an exciting time. We have several lead team teachers here in the audience. We have Elvita, who's our primary lead. She's in her 31st year of teaching. We have Dee Reimer, who's our middle lead, and she is in her 24th year of teaching. We have Mr. Spock here, you'll see in a little bit, he's in his ninth year of teaching with us. We have Ms. Brown, who helped us open the school 13 years ago and is our Dean of Student Support. We have Ms. Sherman also, who's here from our primary team, some others who have slipped in. So we're just excited to be able to be here and celebrate snowy night, crazy weather with that. So, let's see if my clicker here works. Is it on? Is it a great question? Okay. Yes. Here we go. So, all day, every day gifted education that we get to provide for you. And just a quick note about our program too, because people try to orient to how we do things. We've got a secondary model in the sense that our kids move classes, so they move in the morning, even our little guys, as they need to their level of art of language instruction that they need, whatever level they need, and they also move for whatever level of math they need. But our teachers actually teach all subjects. So it's that combined pulling from those two models that we get to experience every year to bring the best out for our students. We have some fun numbers. We put it for you. We've got a red carpet premiere, we've got two festivals, you'll get an invitation to come and see those if they fit with your schedule. We've got six teachers in the second year of the Colorado Dyslexia Pilots, because we know gifted students can also have dyslexia sometimes, fall in that twice exceptional category. So that's been important as to do several of those teachers, couple of those teachers in our crowd here tonight. We've got these specials teachers, we have a basketball program we're gonna highlight for you with our robotics too. We look at the rankings around the state, because the work that we do is really unique. So we look at how we're doing within District 11, we look at how we're doing within the Pikes Peak Region, and we also look for some comparable things. So these are kind of fun for us to see. Ranked number 87 out of 992 Colorado elementary schools, 84th out of 465 middle schools. We are ranked number six out of Colorado elementary charters based on this ranking, and ranked number 30th out of Colorado charter middle schools. So just taking a look, it gives us a picture. You've gotten to see our data with accreditation with distinction that we've got to celebrate with you. These are some schools that we watch how their data is doing in Denver, because there's several schools that do provide all day long, every day, K-8 or even K-12. And the one I highlighted on here is Westgate Community Schools, so it's also open enrollment. It does not require test scores for admittance, which is similar. It's about a year older than our program, and so we keep an eye out, we talk to them. We have visited every school and toured and talked to those principals, except one that's newer on there. So, we keep that in mind. We love working with the whole District 11 GMP program, their magnet program. D11 has one of the oldest, if not the oldest, gifted education services here in this region, and really there's no other all day, every day, K-8 program in the area. And so being able to provide that as part of District 11 to the whole region, we actually have 14 different school districts that come across, students from those districts that come across into D11 because of the work that we're doing with our specialized model. I wanted to highlight, as we get into really cool program stuff that we do that rounds out that program for kids and the things that they're really passionate about, this is how we look at their data, and this is how we look at, are they growing, are their academic needs being met? So that MTSS support process is really deep, really difficult work, and we have a program where in the second year of using it, still a learning curve for us, but it has enabled us to really focus on our students and not keeping track of spreadsheets and where is that process that they're working on and how is this plan going? It's all in one place. So this graph that you see here, that blue area, is high achievement, and up above that horizontal line is high growth. And so you can see the numbers of our students, every dot on there is an individual student in our program that we've tracked. This is live pulled from fall to winter data, so we're looking for what that spring data looks like, but every kid on there is represented in our school. And then there's a screenshot that shows you flags or those triangles that are there. Those are individual students across that line, and we can see, does that student have an E? That means they're, they have a gifted education plan or support, or they're in the talent pool for that. Or they're yellow, they're in a tier two need for support in that particular area based on data, they have a plan we're watching, or they're in all green across. So it gives us a chance with this program to really zero in on each student's individual need and focus on that, which we're doing that deep work with. So our vision and our mission was really important to us when we first opened, that we could meet the D11 goals. How are we a District 11 school? And so 13 years ago, 14 years ago, when we were submitting our request to be here, that was important to us, so we said, this is what the district's doing and this is how we're meeting it. So that's where our goal for our graduates works towards that District 11 profile as well. So this is our timeline from our 13 years ago till now, and our kids. So come on up, guys. We wanted to get you to this really fun part. They're gonna highlight some of the programs, and we have adults who are gonna come and bring something around to you, so don't be surprised if you're converged on right now. They're gonna bring you a tray, and we're gonna do the world fastest paint pour, but so you might wanna slide your gloves on. That's probably what will take the longest, is sliding your gloves on, but we're gonna come, and we got Lola. So Lola's gonna come up and start us off here.
It's like we get creative things to do every week. Two weeks back, we did cup stacking, now we got...
Oh, no. You will get directions for what's in front of you too, but you will wanna have your gloves on, so. All right, Lola.
Geek Thing Films is the brainchild of students in the advanced language arts class working together to create a new short film every year, based on the inspiration of the students. I have been a part of the process for the past three years and a director for two years. We learn leadership, organization, professionalism, storytelling, and take it to a red carpet premiere event to show at a local theater. We premiered at Kimball's Peak III Downtown multiple times and are incredibly grateful for their cooperation. Mr. Kimball just unfortunately passed away, and we feel like our work this year reflects a tribute to him. Geek Thing Films is one of the few middle school productions in the country, and it's so great to be able to do this at Academy ACL.
Bringing technology over into robotics, we use a lot of the same skills, including team building, leadership. We work together and we also reach out to other schools and businesses. We work together and also reach out to other schools and businesses. We just recently went to a team competition related to VEXVRC and our robotics program. In the next couple weeks, we will be going to a state competition and including a disc launcher on a robot. Unfortunately, we don't have the robot here today. We did have a demonstration planned, traffic happens. We have gone to state several times for VEX, and we have won Skills and the Excellence Award. Our robotics team has won 15 awards since 2016, mainly against other high schools. We have won first, second, and third for best, and we have also won three founders awards. Something our coach, also known as our supervisor, Mr. Klein, after every competition he asks, what went well?
We're gonna spotlight him in just a second, so I'm gonna have you talk about him separately.
And I'm also excited to represent our school's sports programs.
Can I say one thing about you? Okay, so for the robot today, we wanted to bring it, she was ready to drive it here. I was so worried because on, so Monday, they were working all day Monday, they actually worked all weekend. They worked Saturday, they had to go to Skills on Sunday night, and then they worked all day Monday on this robot, and it was super hard competition. There were, Canada was there at this competition, a whole bunch of places were there, and so they were seeing points being pulled that they had not seen before in previous competitions. So as soon as they got through that first round and they weren't going to the second round, they started taking that thing apart. So I didn't know if it was even gonna run today at all. They had the screwdrivers out flying around, taking things apart. They managed today to put it back together because they wanted to drive it for you, and it shoots frisbees off the machine, and they were flying frisbees, and they said, no, we can totally do it at the board meeting. I said, you cannot hit board members in the face with these little foam things. This is not gonna work for me. And they said, no, we can shoot it at the wall, but unfortunately, traffic will save all of you from that. So that was the robotics sports, and she'll go into the other sports part.
I am also excited to represent our basketball and volleyball program, hence the basketball jersey. It was great being able to join a D11 Middle School League last year, and this year with our new gym, being able to host home games. It is a great opportunity to get to know our coaches and having support for our games with our school community and parents in that community.
All right. Here, I'll hold it. You wanna hold it for him? Got it? Okay. All right, Penny, you got it?
Continuing with technology, I got to use the CNC machine to cut out the shape of a brain and engrave various words that are commonly used to label gifted individuals. The painting itself is a paint pour utilizing negative space, my first time using negative space, using a mix of paint and a black background of different viscosity. I did the paint pour, added a black background, and chose more words to layer in this theme on the top. I'm excited to show you how to make a quick paint pour of your own.
Are you ready? Okay, here's Danny's quick. They got their gloves on.
Okay, they already got their gloves on?
Okay, gloves are on.
Okay. First, you want to take your pour cup in your hand.
Okay, got it.
And choose one of your given to...
Okay, yep, you're right.
One of your paints.
So choose a starting paint.
Choose a starting paint, and make a quick squirt of a thin layer of paint on the bottom of your pour cup. So yeah, just squirt in it, not much, only a little. I always struggle with that part. This is really hard to handle. Next, choose another paint and repeat with each color until you have almost filled your cup.
We have D11 logo colors for you. So we have white and black and red, and gray.
Now, to explain about what the paint you're using, they have been...
Yes, yep.
They've been given silicon oil and different levels of silicon oil to change the viscosity so that the paints will sink and float at different levels. Glue and water have been added to make the paints pour more smooth. We did not bring a blowtorch for you, which stimulates the silicone... Yeah? I really tried, we really tried.
You wanted the blowtorch, yes.
I really wanted it.
What is the...
I'm sorry, I have not used...
You're good, you're good.
Sorry, I have not used a mic in a while.
What does the blowtorch do?
The blowtorch stimulates the silicon oil to make more microcellage in your final version, but we think these will dry and look great anyways.
All right, do you chuck multiple colors in your cup? Okay, Danny.
Total, almost to the top?
Well, you don't have to go that high.
Yeah, just, you might, you're gonna need a little bit to pour the entire canvas, but not too much.
All right. As, I'll tell him something, okay? As you're doing the last paint, Danny has been working on his technique now for two years. He started right after the pandemic, all shut everything down in 2020, worked that whole summer, new techniques, all that. He has developed the whole blowtorch silicone oil routine with his family to be able to change this viscosity, so he is a pro at this, and we all learned from him in this process, so. Yes, yes.
Was it a rather large string pull?
Yes.
Yeah, beautiful arm.
Thanks.
Danny's a fourth grader. Yes, he is 10. Okay.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
Pour your paint cup over the center of your canvas. Try to get as close to the center as you can.
I'm learning how to use this. This is great.
Pour your paint cup, wait, I already read that. Tilt your canvas as needed to cover any white spots. You will see cells appear as the lighter paint rises to the top. You can tilt the canvas to make these larger, which will make the, which will make, in my opinion, the canvas look, your paint pour look better.
I can't talk.
Your paint will dry in amazing ways, and we will move these to a drying spot for you. I'm excited to see how they turn out.
All right, stay here in case they have any questions. So as you're seeing your paint move around, we have people behind you who can help move that and dry that. If you wanna take your gloves off and put them in the box on the side, you can do that too, so you're not stuck with painted gloves. Yep, and you'll kinda tilt it around so it'll cover the hole. The reason why you have a layer, a little box lid underneath is so that when it dries, it doesn't stick to your cardboard. That was a learned the hard way experience the first couple times, right?
Okay.
And you'll see these little cells appear as Danny's paint additives change that weight of the paint, and the lighter paint comes to the top with the heavier paint.
I'm just trying to survive the...
Oh yeah, we're gonna let them sit there and dry so they're not too tacky for you too. Yes. Which one was yours? So we just, we so appreciate the teamwork with the D11 board, working together with our board, working with District 11 staff, and our staff working together, and families and kids, and we have time for any questions that you have.
Well, thank you. I think for the next board retreat, we are getting Danny. He's going to come and lead us on activities.
Consultant artist, that's right. We'll film it and we'll run the robot around with drinks in your cupboard, yes.
And bring his blowtorch too, so.
That's right. That's special risk management process right there, that's a different level.
So thank you, thank you, appreciate it again, and it's really great, it's really great to feature a District 11 charter under the school spotlight, and you know, sometimes we are more focused on our traditional District 11 schools, having you here and knowing that you are part of our umbrella of schools, so it's great to celebrate your success.
Thank you.
And there was some amazing student, school data too, that you guys shared out there. You are top in so many different categories out there. Board members, you have thoughts, comments, questions?
All right, thank you.
Secretary Bankus?
I want to thank you all for being here and sharing what you do each and every day. It's wonderful. I've been to your school several times, and I see that you continue to grow and develop and bring your students forward so that they have an appropriate audience in which to display all that you're learning and all that you're becoming, so thank you for being here.
Director Nelson?
I just wanted to comment on, when I visited your school last year, last spring, I was struck by the true educational equity that is happening. You are really meeting students where they are and providing the supports and resources that each of them needs, and seeing that you can move between, I guess essentially grade levels based on where you're at, that's fantastic. So thank you for keeping up the hard work, and thank you, kids, for presenting tonight. Really appreciate the courage that it took to do so. You did great.
Director Jorgensen?
Yeah, just a comment, when I toured with Ms. Myers at the school a couple weeks ago, you were doing a game night that night. I couldn't come for the evening, but I wanted to come see all the Hulu skirts and all that. You guys had a fun day, but goes to show that if you build it, they will come. And when we were speaking, you had people, you had students coming as far as, as far as in from Calhan, from Woodland Park, from down by Fort Carson.
The family comes from Florissant every day, yes.
From Florissant, yeah, so Florissant, yeah, however you wanna say it. So you, everybody has their own dialect, but you, you've built something that people want to travel to with their kids, and so you know, what we see happening at Academy ACL, we want to see in all of our schools, because that's what's gonna bring people back to D11, is seeing, you know, things like this, which we have going on in a lot of our schools. We're just trying to get the word out and bring more families back to D11, so thank you for, for being a part of that.
Director Ott?
Thank you. I got to visit on the day that Nikki was shrunk and put into a hamster ball, so that was a lot of fun, yes. So that's for Readathon, and so thank you for continuing to school, and I love that the kids are here, and thanks for the project, and I can hardly wait to see what you do next for Readathon amongst all the other things that will be exciting at Academy ACL. Thank you.
Thank you. And you mentioned that you are up for renewal next year?
Yes, we come before you next fall, yes.
For this fall, okay. And based on your achievement and your performance and how there is a demand for a school such as you in the community, when you are talking about you are one of the few schools that are... There is a demand for a school such as you in the community when you are talking about you are one of the few schools that offer K8. Gifted and talented for all students. In this community, so I look forward to that renewal conversation. Just one quick question I had, what percentage of your school demographics fall into the special, special needs category?
We are high this year, so we have, and I'd have to calculate the percentage, we have about 22 to 24 students, we may have 25 students qualify for one special teacher. And so we're high this year. Traditionally, it's often been under speech language, but we're seeing that vary a little bit more in that special education category. Some of those students are both gifted and have a special need and that's not even counting the. 504 category as well. And then some of them just are typical students and they might have that IEP or 504.
About 25?
Yeah.
Out of 300, so maybe about.
Yeah, 288.
288. Great, okay, just impressed with everything that you guys are doing out there. And the last few months, we have discussed charter school strategies and how they fit and you were there, some of the conversations out there too. And it. Goes back to charter schools have a role to play in this community and parents choose them and there is a demand for it in there. And I go back to if you were hypothetically coming in and applying to District 11 at this point in time, would we deny you the opportunity to be part of District 11? When you have demonstrated this kind of performance and ability. And that's the same lens we have to look at with other charters that are coming in too. That we hold them, you to me are the standard bearers for charters in District 11 and when charters come in, new charters come in. Or existing charters to apply, we are going to, at least personally for me, I'm going to compare them to Academy ACL and see if they live up to your standards. And if we do, is it only right that we do provide them that opportunity to thrive, just like you guys are in District 11? And there is a niche, a place for charters like you in District 11. So thank you, that's all I have. Oh. Director Loma, I missed you, sorry.
No, I just wanted to say thank you and you're like, right in what, what President Malpatum said. You're proof that parents should decide if they want what they want. And you are an example of that. And not everybody fits your mold, but, and so as we diversify our, our schools. I think we'll meet more needs, you know, and so you're, you're like, like President Malpatum said, you are. Helping us with selling that ideal. Because I was elected by every parent in this community, not just parents that have their kids in this school. And so I consider myself their servant, not just the D11 servant, but every child, whether they go to a private school. Charter school, doesn't, doesn't matter, if they're in this district, then I feel obligated to help. So thank you for, for what you do.
And I was up before you when you were part of the board, when we were first coming on board, right? That approval process and we take those high standards so incredibly close to us. As we try to meet that promise to the district that we made those 13 years ago, 14 when the vote happened.
Long time ago, huh?
Because that's, that's very serious for us and we so appreciate the work that District 11 staff has done the whole way. Got Dr. Mendelsburg is our current charter liaison, et cetera. That work has just been really important and that teamwork and the cohesiveness, I'd say also of the D11 charters, because all of us want to. Meet that high standard and work together and, and that's why our parents have communicated with us so much about what they need in the area, so, thank you.
Thank you, back to you Superintendent Call.
Great, if I could get our three students to come up and give your teacher shout outs. You get to come sit up here at my chair.
Danny, you get to come here.
Come all the way up. Alright. I think Lola's first, if that's your favorite teacher up on the screen there. You know how to, the mic's already on. Introduce yourself again, everyone. You can read it.
Mr. Spock is.
Introduce yourself first.
My name is Lola Toby. And I am in Mr. Spock's homeroom class and his language arts class, which means I get to work on the movie every year. And it is so much fun and I think Mr. Spock is an amazing teacher. He always provides us with freedom and the ability to make our own decisions while still giving us so much help and so much guidance wherever we need it.
Hello, everybody, I am Taryn and one of the things I'm here for is to represent basketball. And I would like to give out a, I would like to give a shout out to my coach, Coach Prada. He really helped encourage us to, right there, wave. Coach JT Prada has brought NBA and WNBA and college skills to our. You know what, skip it, basketball program. After Coach Scott Clapper helped us join the D11 league last year, Coach Prada. Has worked with our girls and boys' basketball teams to connect hard work, challenging skills, communication. Sportsmanship and teamwork for our students with several who have never touched a basketball before this season. Thank you.
I have to move the mic very far down.
You think so? I don't think so, I think you're loud enough.
Yeah, I'm loud enough, it's just more fun. I could not have made my amazing art piece without Mr. Klein. And.
He had traffic issues, he was stuck with the ice.
Okay.
I'll show you, bless you Danny.
Allergies.
Allergies?
You're allergic to Mr. Klein.
Are you ready to go now?
My.
Go ahead.
My name is Danny Hennis, I forgot to say that part. Mr. Jim Klein is in his 10th year at Academy ACL. As a part-time technology teacher, after-school robotics coach and daily tech support. He uses his physics in a bo, box in tech class. He teaches coding to fifth through eighth grade. I still don't know how to use my. Consults for the film team and C and C art. Like what I, like what I did. And ran back simultaneously, and ran back, ran back to back simultan, ran back to back simultaneous chess games for board games night.
Did you win or lose the chess games?
I don't know, but Figaro and Mr. Klein, I think he won.
Okay, I just want to tell a short story about Principal Myers and how she leans in as a charter leader into a district authorization. This is sometimes not normal for folks, but all of our charters that District 11 authorizes show up to our PD days. For we, where we have meetings for district-specific strategies. There is no obligation of the charter leaders to adopt those strategies. They have their own governance model, they have their own instructional strategies. You saw the strong performance at Academy ACL. But Nikki always shows up as a team player and a collaborator and she leans in and I will find her simultaneously. Back to back as Danny pointed out, in both the elementary and middle school meetings because she is a K8. So I just want to really acknowledge the partner that she's been to District 11, at least in the short time that I've been here, but clearly. Over the 10 years now that the Academy ACL has been here, so. Big round of applause for Academy ACL. Read Across America is coming up and we got a kickstart off of it today, I want to thank Taylor Elementary School and the kindergarten class of Ms., Ms. Figaro. She, they brought the kids in today and I got to sit in the extremely big red chair. So if anyone is ever thinking that they've put on a little bit of weight of the holidays, just go find a big red chair and you will immediately feel tiny again. But it was just a great opportunity, I asked my team this week to really focus on literacy and so a lot of our GSD slides are going to be literacy focused. But I applaud Taylor for beating everyone else to the calendar event of when Read Across America starts, so. They just decided to start it a couple of days early, which there's never a bad day to celebrate reading. Gina, are you here? Are you still here? Gina, I'm gonna make you come up a little bit while I tell a little story. Gina Salazi is the Executive Director for the Children's Literacy Center and she met me over at Keller Elementary School and, and next to me, there's. Our Principal Stacy and then there's our Site Coordinator Serena and there's Gina on the other end and in the middle there is Mia, who's one of our young students. But I want everyone to understand that District 11 is continually seeking ways that we can extend both the time and the quality. Of how it is that we are connecting with our children. And the Children's Literacy Center has been a strong partner and is a growing partner in District 11. They're currently at Keller and at Columbia and are expanding to McCullough and to Trailblazer. And, and to Adams, thank you. And those conversations are robust and they are growing and the folks that they bring in are normally retired educators. But certainly well-trained in literacy and we were there, this was just earlier, late last week, early this week, my week's blend. We get lost in the time, it was last week. And it, we had a couple of absences because it was a weather day, that's what it was, it was the Thursday. But we immediately were able to collapse and connect the right tutor with the right student and there was immediate learning and engagement going on in a well-planned partnership. So I just want to first thank Gina personally because we've been around this a few times and we have a strong partnership and it is starting now. To really entrench itself in our, in our classrooms and you can see this, the devilish smile on young Mia there. Who is certainly a very engaged and eager student to be in that space. Gina, would you like to say anything to the board or to the audience, come to the microphone please.
You can go to the microphone.
There you go.
Just an incredible opportunity for CLC to work with District 11 in this kind of a partnership, it's fairly unprecedented. But it should be happening and it is. And Stacy, who is the principal at Keller, can tell you. This is a high-intensity tutoring program and these students are seeing four times a week an hour each time. And the improvement in them is remarkable. And we are now, today I got some of the data, we are over 40 students that are matched up one-to-one. That's the, that's the magic, is the one-to-one. So it's because District 11 was willing to say, yeah, we're gonna do something that's a little, not in the same vein as normal. And this is outside of that, but it's working and we're gonna continue to grow it. So one thanks to District 11, all principals involved, there's many layers of people involved, so thank you to all of them.
Great, and just to pass along, one more thanks to Jennifer Chapel in the back who helps. Implement and monitor and support and is everywhere and on my way to Keller, I literally walked by her office and said. You're gonna go meet me and Gina over at CLC and she stopped, dropped, enrolled and was there and was the one who I believe took the picture. No, maybe that's my arm that took the picture. Why are you not in that picture? Great, thank you Gina. Moving on to other classrooms, thank you. On our literacy shout outs for the week for getting stuff done. The six schools that you see highlighted here, we wanted to talk a little bit about our significant reading deficiencies as reported to the state, SRD. All six of these schools were able to move more than 10% of their students out of the SRD category just from beginning of year to mid-year. And that is a great celebration for us, we all know that we need to learn how to read so we can read to learn. And being able to have this focus on early literacy, on all literacy is gonna pay huge dividends. For our students and for our district going forward. So hats off to West, to Edison, to Queen Palmer, to Wilson, to Rudy and to Henry Elementary Schools. So here we have a breakout of some great work that's happening at Jenkins Middle School, the ELA team for sixth and seventh grade. Opened up a, an open wall writing workshop, which was a way to give kids a new framework for them to be able to. Connect some of the complexities of writing with the text and grapple with the structure for them to be able to, then be able to communicate it. We don't have a number associated with it, but they said that they were literally watching kids go from a do not, does not meet expectations. To exceeding expectations through this one simple workshop and so I really applaud the creative thinking happening at Jenkins Middle School. To give kids new ways to solve old problems. We all know that many of our children are struggling to express how they comprehend and communicate the knowledge that they've gained. And having this new open writing workshop was a great benefit, thanks to the Jenkins Jaguars. I don't have a picture because it's impossible to put 50 schools and all the SAC representatives on here. Is Velvet here tonight? I don't think Velvet made it due to the weather. But if you can recall Velvet Stefana coming forward as our DAC Chair constantly asking for SAC representatives. Constantly asking, constantly asking. We are now fill all the way for all the traditional District 11 schools and we are now asking our D11 authorized charters. To be able to provide us who their SAC chairs are as well. Remember DAC, SAC, Budget Subcommittee, Accreditation Committees, these are not just District 11 ideas, these are state ideals. So this is not just something we're trying to do, it is the way the state thinks that and knows that we should be partnered with members of our community, so. The map is full and we are excited. A special Getting Stuff Done shout out to our payroll department, this is Kim, Bobby, Alicia and Sharon. I don't know if you all remember, but right before Christmas, we announced the Mitchell Promise and Principal George Smith stood at the microphone and said. It's only a promise if it's kept. And so payroll labored extra hours to ensure that the teacher and staff's incentives that we announced. Were actually paid in the first paycheck in February. And that, for anybody who has dealt with payroll and a bureaucracy as large as we are, would go to tell you that that is overcoming a huge obstacle. So a huge shout out to the payroll department for investing the time to ensure that our teachers and staff were given the appropriate pay that we had promised them, so. Step one of Mitchell Promise complete, looking forward to reporting more going forward. And then just a huge shout out, not just to the two teachers Amanda and Todd here, but to all our teachers. If you're not paying attention to our social media, Tuesday is Teacher Tuesday. We are getting incredible amounts of viewing and sharing, we have over 27,000 views on each one of our Teacher Tuesday acknowledgements. And so both at Edison and Doherty, so it's exciting to be able to celebrate them here, we are so excited about it. That we decided we're gonna go with the old classic rock station, two for Tuesdays and we're gonna now celebrate two teachers every Tuesday. Because why would we want to not celebrate as many teachers as we possibly can? So thanks to the comms department and particularly for the schools who are nominating the teachers. I think there's an infinite list of our teachers that we should be able to celebrate and here are a couple of highlights there, so please. Take the time to look at our social media, 27,000 views and over 600 likes per teacher. And that's all I have for my superintendent's report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or feedback? Director Nelson.
I just had a question about the reading intervention program, did it have a name? Did I miss that?
The Children's Literacy Center?
Yes.
Gina, that was here, yes.
How long have we been doing that for?
Who can answer that for me? A little bit longer than I've been here, I think they started, I know they were there last year.
But it's fairly new?
I think it's fairly new.
It, it sounds like a wonderful program, something, a good thing we have going, what do you need to expand it?
We're, we're in expansion right now, so it was just two schools and we are in that expansion now to add another three schools.
So you don't need anything from us to help with that, because let me know.
We will let you know, we are, we are growing at the right rate right now. As with all tutoring opportunities, the shortage is not on ideas, it's on qualified volunteers or employees to be able to fill those positions and so. Having a strong partnership with a, an accredited organization like CLC who has strong reputation within the state. Makes it easier for us to be able to do that and we're excited to be able to continue to grow it.
Is that volunteer or are we having to fund that? I'm the treasurer, so I'm wondering, you know.
We pay, there is a payment opportunity.
Okay. Oh, she said right now it's funded through a grant through CDE, so, well, let us know if we need to eventually work that into our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm excited personally to see that partnership too and that one-on-one relationship with the students. And Pressure Nelson has got the key to the vault, so anything regarding funding, you'll have to go through her. have to go through her. Moving on, you done? Superintendent call? Yeah, and I don't see any more comments out there. Moving on to public comments, do we have, okay. Thank you. We have a stack of public comments, so we'll go through them one by one. Going over the board protocol first, just want to remind the audience, first and foremost, the board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient contact of the business of the district. And as highlighted in the board priorities, the board is very interested in building trust and transparency by listening to the community feedback, as it helps us better do our work. The clear expectation is that this feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner, without resorting to personal attacks and disparaging remarks. So please be respectful of everyone in this room, including board members, staff, and audience, and maintain the expected decorum in the boardroom. Each of you have three minutes for your comment. A clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that. Please monitor the clock, so you can get through your comments in three minutes. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking, or use a silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the district or the board. With that, I have some student comments first, and as it's protocol, we go with the students first. Ms. Asha Hart, H-A-R-T. And maybe our students are not here, they signed up, and maybe because of the weather, they're not here. Okay, moving on. Samuel Ford. Sam Ford. Mr. Ford? Okay. Okay. Well, this could go really quickly. Mr., or, it could be, I don't know, Ms. Rigati? Rigati? Reagan? Reagan Rigati? Benny Curtain? Benny Curtain? Ren Fortier? Ren Fortier? These are all students from Coronado High School, from what I see. One student from RDC Echo, four students from Coronado. None of them are here. Moving on to action comments, Dr. Joe Schott. And Joe Schott is here, so...
Dr. Mel Parkham, Directors, Mr. Gall. I'm Joe Schott, elected teacher representative of the Colorado Springs Education Association, and it's a pleasure to come to you this evening as you prepare a resolution in support of Read Across America. Reading is a primary doorway to ideas, understanding, imagination, and challenges to complacency and dogma. Literacy remains one of public education's great gifts to its citizenry and buttresses our democracy. In addition to the annual CSEA book giveaway he created for the Labor Day Balloon Festival downtown, at which we give away to our community's children many thousands of books for free, again this year Kevin Coughlin has headed up our Read Across America book donation. Dr. Angelica Givler and CSEA Intermediate Level Director Laura Andehar are also assisting with this project promoting literacy. In support of pre-K through 12th grade children in the region, recent recipients of our book donations have included Urban Peak, now called The Place, which serves homeless youth, Court Care of the Pike's Peak Region, which provides free childcare to families with court-related business, Zack's Place, which provides care for children with disabilities, and last year, all of D-11's elementary schools. This year, the teachers of the Colorado Springs Education Association will provide to the library of each of the nine D-11 middle schools, two copies of Carthick Delivers, and three copies of We Weren't Looking to Be Found to each of our high schools' libraries. These books are recommended by the founder and ongoing sponsor of Read Across America, the National Education Association, which over the past century has developed this celebration of reading into an educational institution. As in years past, CSEA leaders will be in schools sharing their love of reading with students during Read Across America Week. We urge everyone to take the opportunity to share an undisturbed moment with children and a favorite book. It is a simple, easy, and wonderful gift to give. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy Adair.
My name is Stacy Adair, I'm a teacher in D-11. Teachers need to be represented. I definitely need representation. However, I worry that those representing us as teachers don't have our best interests in mine. Take next year's calendar, for instance. The Teachers Union has been holding up the approval of the calendar for over a month. Evidently, because of a separate grievance the union has filed, the master agreement itself disallows this. This grievance isn't scheduled to be heard until August, six months from now. Listen, I have a new, super cute, amazing granddaughter, and I need to be able to plan out my visits. Out of state, I need to make plans and travel arrangements. I cannot make any plans until the calendar is approved. Why is this happening? Where is the respect that the union should have for employees they supposedly represent? The calendar was supposed to be approved and sent to the board by January 20th. That's over a month ago. Please respect the employees instead of using us as pawns in unrelated issues. I'm not the only teacher who feels this way. I'm starting to hear from other teachers similar thoughts about the union, and I'm thinking maybe we should look into alternative options for teacher representation. On another note, as we hear the great board meeting, let's go ahead and sign a contract or offer a contract, or however that works, for the new superintendent, so we can keep this great momentum going and really just bring District 11 up. It was so exciting to hear everything, and all of our board meetings are child-centered, which is, you know, the way education should be. Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl Saylor.
Good evening, Board, and Superintendent Gall. My name is Cheryl Saylor, and I'm with the D-11 Achievement Alliance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, bless all who are with us this evening. You have tasked us with protecting and providing for our children. Please keep that at the forefront of our hearts and minds throughout this meeting. In the name of Your Son, Jesus Christ, we pray, amen. Since we are all here today for the best good of our children, and our focus is their education, we must remember that their mental health plays a big role in academic achievement. What we are doing to our children with the gender pronoun choices creates confusion and chaos among the vulnerable, resulting in stress and mental health issues. Young elementary students don't have a clue yet what is going on sexually, and when they are struggling to learn what pronouns are as part of grammar, how are they supposed to understand the meaning of the words when surrounded by confusing examples? When our teens who are dealing with figuring out who they are and where they fit among their peers are confronted with having to declare which pronouns they want to be addressed with, this only adds to the most confusing time in their lives. I remember being a teenager and trying to figure out who I was and where I fit in, and what I wanted to be when I grew up. Those things we all deal with when we're growing up. The benefit I had was I was surrounded by stability. I could count on a stable family, church, school environment, and city life. Granted, I was very blessed, and I understand, many of our students don't have a stable environment outside, and I worry about these vulnerable children. Can't we at least provide stability for them at school? Imagine a school environment where the children around you change their name and gender preference on almost a weekly basis in some cases. This must surely create more mental health problems than ever before, and everyone is affected. Teachers don't know how to act or what to say, counselors aren't comfortable, student names and genders are even being changed in power school. Are parents being informed this is what's going on with their children, and are they confused as well? This is not a stable environment. If we continue to allow this in our schools, I worry that we will see more mental health issues among our students. This isn't fair to students, teachers, counselors, or medical staff. Protect our children with a stable school environment where they can focus on their studies and be comfortable they won't be forced to choose a gender or pronoun. Any confusion some children have on this issue is for them, their parents, and counselors to deal with in private. It does not need to be forced upon everyone in the school system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dana Rasmussen.
Hello, my name is Dana Rasmussen. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. They matter. I was Christian until I got tired of being told I didn't matter. I was twelve years old when I attempted suicide, because I was told by people I trusted that I didn't matter, and people like me did not matter. The difference between gender and sexuality matters. Trans kids matter. Their pronouns matter. Recognizing their identities is suicide prevention. Your trans students' lives matter. My name is Dana Rasmussen. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. They matter. I was Christian until I got tired of being told I didn't matter. I was twelve years old when I attempted suicide, because I was told I did not matter. The difference between gender and sexuality matters. Trans kids matter. Their pronouns matter. Recognizing their identities is suicide prevention. Your trans students' lives matter. My name is Dana Rasmussen. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. They matter. I was Christian until I got tired of being told I didn't matter. I was twelve years old when I attempted suicide, because I was told by people I trusted that I did not matter. The difference between gender and sexuality matters. Trans kids matter. Their pronouns matter. Recognizing their identities is suicide prevention. Your trans students' lives matter.
Thank you. Gabriel Burek. Gabriel, Gabriel Burek. Oh.
Well, thank you all for allowing me the time to speak. I really appreciate it. As you said, my name's Gabe Burek. I was born in D-11, and I've lived in D-11 essentially the entirety of my life, aside from the time attending college. I graduated from a D-11 high school, as did both of my brothers. I've competed for D-11, I've coached for D-11, and before resigning, about a year and a half ago, I taught for D-11 for around seven years. My family and I have been very connected to this district, and I wanna specifically thank this D-11 Board for all that you guys have done and the work that you've accomplished since being elected a little over a year ago. We really appreciate you. I know it's not an easy job. Keep up the good work. Thank you. I also wanna thank you for seeking to address the use of pronouns. A few years ago, I had a wonderful underclassman student who was a part of a really fun history class. At one point, she asked me if I thought she looked like a guy. I responded honestly, no, that she looked like a girl. She was disappointed and expressed something to the effect of wanting to look like a guy or be a guy. I asked her why she wanted that. At that time, she did not know. However, she came back to a future class and told me, essentially, the reason she wanted to be or look like a guy was because of how much she hated her mom. If I had merely used a different pronoun and dishonestly told her she looked like a guy, maybe it would have made her feel better for a short time. But it would have been unkind and unloving to do so, because it would have merely been an effort to put a Band-Aid on a symptom, instead of addressing the very real and very deep wound that was clearly hurting her and she needed healing for. Thus, I think the district's policy to not focus on what is so often a student's Band-Aid solution to a deep and very real heart wound is very appropriate, and actually a great act of kindness and love. So again, thank you for all that you are seeking to do. I greatly appreciate your hard work. Keep up the good job.
Kayanne Wilcox. Susan Staver.
Hello, Board members, I'm Mr. Gall. I'm a retired teacher from D-11.
You want to pull the microphone? Yeah, there you go.
My six young grandchildren live in this district, and their parents and I care deeply about what goes on here for the sake of our future. On February 8th, you on the D-11 School Board were talking about policies. Director Jorgensen proposed that staff not be allowed to ask students their pronouns. Thank you, Director Jorgensen, for being proactive in proposing this. Our children are bombarded with confusing messages about gender and identity. Teachers and staff do not need to wade into this minefield. I worry that students confused about their gender identity, for students confused about their gender identity, it just puts them on the spot and could embarrass them in front of their peers. Others may feel pressured about how to respond. These conversations belong in the home, not in the school. In a time when students are struggling with academics, schools do not need to spend time and energy sexualizing children. They need to prepare students for life by helping them become proficient in core academics, math, language, science, and history. We support your efforts to protect all our students from questionable ideologies and keep the focus on academics. Also, I wholeheartedly support Mr. Gall for Superintendent. He has accomplished so much already and is steering the district in the right direction. Please offer him a three-to-five-year contract, so good things will continue to happen for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Martin.
My name is Hannah Martin, and my pronouns are she, her, ella. I am a D-11 staff member and parent, as well as a children's pastor, and I am here tonight to share my concerns about potential policies around teachers' rights to ask students their preferred pronouns, as well as our right to have opinions about this board sitting in front of me this evening. I think it is beyond valuable for our Board and the Policy Committee to know that study after study after study has shown that using someone's correct pronouns reduces their risk to hurt themselves by fifty percent. Fifty percent. That reduction is even more when using the correct pronouns with our black and brown queer students. Knowing that we have lost many students in our D-11 community, and even recently, this hits even harder as we fight to ensure the safety of our students. And doesn't that work perfectly that our number-one priority assigned by all of you is improved outcomes for all students? Now, I may be old-fashioned, but I am pretty sure we are prioritizing positive outcomes when we make choices that help keep students healthy and breathing. If this board chooses to approve a policy that removes this inclusive and life-saving act, and the Policy Committee decides that this is something we can remove from teacher vocabulary, it will prove that our number-one priority is not students, nor is it best intentions to support every student. As an educator, it is also concerning that our Board wants to quiet the concerned voices of the very people who are making the magic happen, connecting synapses, and growing young minds. Nationwide, we are seeing colleges and universities close their education programs because our younger generations have less of an interest in becoming an educator than ever before. Vacancies in classrooms here in D-11 are lasting entire school years, and yet we want to silence the teachers who are actually showing up. If we cannot be trusted as professionals... If we cannot be trusted as professionals to do our job, the number will rise in empty spaces and we will continue to scramble to have whatever warm bodies are available to man a room. We need to trust the professional opinions of our educators and know their best intentions have always, always been for the students. I would like to quickly note that when I began, I shared my preferred pronouns. It didn't disrupt my time sharing nor take up too much space, yet created a safe and inclusive place for those in the room, even those who don't understand or don't share their pronouns. If it is something small I can do that could have a 50/50 chance to save a life, share kindness, actively be what a public school classroom is supposed to be, then I'm doing my job to ensure I have the best in mind for all students. Before coming here tonight, I had the pleasure of participating in my church's Ash Wednesday service. We were reminded in Isaiah 58 that the Israelites were fasting in ways that ignored the needs of others. For them, fasting was an attempt to be faithful that hurt and oppressed others. There are members on this board making these decisions in an attempt to be faithful, but you are hurting others. You have forgotten that you are dust. You have forgotten that acts of faith do not ignore, hurt, or exploit others, they include others. They flip the very tables you are sitting at and welcome the ignored, hurt, and exploited. I pray the Spirit moves this Ash Wednesday for you all and reminds you that we are all dust, connected through holy breath, and holy breath exhales with every preferred pronoun spoken.
Thank you. Claudia Grever.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I am a substitute teacher. I would like to speak about allowing teachers to ask students their pronouns. Two years ago, I was a long-term sub at a middle school. My son was an eighth grader there. The drama teacher who had my son had told the class of eighth graders to read a book called Peanut Goes for the Gold. It was a story of a gender non-binary guinea pig. He told the class of 13-year-olds that gender is a societal construct. Then he proceeded to tell them to write a paragraph about the guinea pig using they/them pronouns. My son refused using the pronouns and used the name Peanut instead. Then he told me about it. Why is a teacher trying to teach my 13-year-old child his gender ideology worldview? Why is a teacher teaching children about alternative, wrong, and not agreed-upon use of pronouns? I discovered that year that some teachers have an agenda and has nothing to do with teaching classical education. I went to the admin, then I went to the school board, then I really got involved. That teacher, I was angry as he did this behind closed doors right across the hallway from my classroom. That teacher left the middle school that next year and went to High Trails, which is an overnight camp for sixth graders where no parent can be an observer. At High Trails, I am told that one of the first questions that is asked of the sixth graders is, "What are your pronouns and with which gender do you feel comfortable sleeping?" The latter being a larger concern for the safety of our children. Parents, would you feel safe that your 10-year-old child was sleeping in cabins based on gender identity? My 18-year-old in high school said that the art teacher asked him his pronouns and that felt weird. He did not answer because it made him feel very uncomfortable. Can you imagine asking a 10-year-old this question? Our school system is failing. Our children are not being taught math and reading, but instead are being taught activism and gender ideology. If a child feels the need to change their pronouns, then fine. But adults should not be asking K through 12 children what their preferred pronouns are. Thank you.
Joseph Boyle.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Boyle and I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf. A rekindling of confidence in the direction D-11 is taking towards academic excellence is on the upswing under the leadership of this board and Superintendent Gall. In order to continue gaining the confidence of families within District 11's boundaries, the board needs to continue to make it clear that D-11's focus on the academic achievement and success of each and every student entrusted to the district. D-11 families are anxious to see continuing signs that they might once feel again confident that entrusting their children's education to D-11 is a safe, productive, and reliable choice to make. Continuing to demonstrate that the district respects the fundamental rights of the family is crucial to regaining their trust. This brings us to the current discussion regarding pronouns. As indicated at the last board meeting, a teacher's accommodation and respect for any particular student's request to be called a pronoun not indicated by that student's biological sex is one thing. And a teacher's requiring that every student supply a pronoun as if his or her gender is automatically subject to question is a very different thing. For a teacher or other figure of authority to solicit, or require of, or otherwise compel every student to render a statement of pronoun preference is in effect a demand for conformity to the controversial ideological belief that pronouns refer to gender and not biological sex and that gender or sex is a matter of personal choice rather than a biological condition. Such demands for ideological conformity violate constitutional protections against compelled speech, among other constitutional rights. There is an argument to be made that requiring pronoun statements from students informs the teachers in ways that can help build a productive educational relationship with their students. A student's religious beliefs, whatever they may be, are also integral to many students' identity and understanding them could also build relationships. Yet, we agree that discussion of personal religious beliefs, much less demands of students to state them, is not appropriate in the public school classroom. Just as compelled statements of religious belief are not appropriate in the public school classroom, statements of ideological conformity, whether explicit or implied, are not appropriate in the public school classroom, no matter what value a teacher's knowledge of either of them might be. I urge the board to continue to demonstrate to the families whose trust in public education has waned in recent years that their fundamental rights as parents will be respected in D-11 by holding firm and taking a stand against the intolerant nature and practice of gender ideology. Thank you.
Naomi Lopez.
Can you hear me okay? My voice is a little raspy today. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Hello, board. I'm speaking tonight as an educator regarding the requests made during the last board meeting by VP Jorgensen to include language into the employee conduct policy restricting our ability to honor and respect our students in regards to using their pronouns. Contrary to his assertion, teachers and other assertions made tonight, teachers are not promoting an agenda by honoring their pronouns, our students' pronouns, nor are we encouraging them to question their gender identity. This is simply not happening at any grade level. Let me share with you what is happening. We teachers absolutely do respect the individual identities of all of our students and we teachers and we do this to foster a trusting relationship between students and teachers that directly creates a welcoming and a safe space for students to be ready and willing to learn. This is sound pedagogy and aligns with the board's values of respect, learning, transparency, safety, collaboration, effectiveness, and efficacy. Every day in the classroom, we teachers respect our students by doing the following: using the correct pronunciation of their names, honoring and celebrating their cultural practices, building upon their primary language when they are not monolingual, or when they use alternative and augmentative communication to speak. We honor their learning styles and accommodate their special education needs. We highlight their interests to foster creative thinking and career readiness. We acknowledge their talents and how they choose to show up in their world, including their gender identity. As these practices highlight, we cannot separate a part of a whole child in order to effectively teach that child. And we most certainly do not reject a part of what makes a child who they are because an adult feels offended by who they are, as Director Loma stated at the last board meeting. VP Jorgensen also mentioned that cisgender students might feel uncomfortable to know what their classmates' pronouns are. Are we, as a district, okay with saying that this is a sufficient reason to discriminate against the feelings of transgender students for the possible feelings of their classmates? We cannot choose one over the other. They are our students, every single one of them. I certainly hope we do not choose to do this and let's do the right thing for all of our students. It is our duty. And another thing, it is not up to cisgender people to say what transgender people feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Cantredine.
I want to drop this mic. Good evening and thank you, board. Teachers are among the most influential people in a child's life. Good teachers engender inclusivity and self-worth in students by attending to their different learning capabilities and by creating positive learning environments with boundaries that make their world comprehensible. Having earned the trust of impressionable children, teachers help guide them toward an understanding of their academic potential. If teachers enter into the discussion of personal pronouns, I worry about teaching students concepts that conflict with their own biology, fueling identity confusion and anxiety already at crisis levels in our youth. We must protect our children. Bill Maher once joked, "Gender fluid? Kids are fluid about everything." If kids knew what they wanted to be at age eight, they would be filled with cowboys and princesses. I wanted to be a pirate. Thank God, nobody took me seriously and scheduled me for an eye removal and peg leg surgery. Considering the sharp decline in youth mental health, of what benefit would it be for young students to think about gender identity? Why are we confusing students by teaching them to speak differently than their family does at home? Why would educators teach concepts that cause students confusion and pressure them to abandon their family's beliefs and values? We must protect our children. Teaching students ideas that differ from the family's beliefs is unfair to them and their parents. Not only does it undermine their parents who have a right to make decisions about their kids' education, it causes kids confusion and anxiety for fear of misspeaking at home and at school. Setting children against their parents is the opposite of what educators should be doing. Real inclusion requires a focus not on superficial things like pronouns, but on treating each person with kindness and consideration and on allowing each other grace to learn forgiveness to make mistakes and patience to grow. Pronouns that refer to gender identity and biological sex are premised on a controversial and complicated political ideology that is objectionable to many parents. Chinese third graders learn calculus while ours aren't reading or doing math at grade level, with our most vulnerable at-risk students suffering the most. That's why schools should keep life simpler for teachers, parents, and young students by not promoting strange and ambiguous ideas that are difficult for children to understand, causing anxiety and depression. We owe it to our children to protect them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Shelton.
Good evening, directors. My name is Joseph Shelton. I'm 26 years old. I am an LGBTQ+ advocate and activist here in El Paso County and I use he/him pronouns. What are your pronouns? Sorry if I offended you, Dr. Loma. Tonight, I am here to discuss with you the importance of asking individuals pronouns. At the February 8th meeting, Vice President Jorgensen placed forth a disgusting request to ban all school personnel from asking students their pronouns, stating, and I quote, "That's none of our business." While in your opinion, it may not be your business, it is a life-saving technique and I will tell you why. Tonight, in this room, we have cisgender males, cisgender females, transgender males, transgender females, and non-binary individuals. When you look around the room, some pass us who they are, while others don't. While you may say that asking pronouns doesn't matter, I'll tell you that it does. Across the nation, students are in a process of self-identification. For some, this self-identification comes easy, while for others, it comes as a process. Asking a student their pronouns allows them the chance to explore their identity and grow as who they are. It also allows the student to feel safe, welcome, and comfortable where they are. Allow me to give you a little example. Let's say I look around the room and put my focus on you as directors. I take one look at you and decide, "You must be Democrats." Instead of asking your affiliation, I'm going to come up to you and tell you how great Joe Biden is as a president. I'll talk about how the vaccine is working and help the nation. I will bring up every Democrat idea and aspect and shoot down every Republican idea. Now, knowing who some of you are on this board, I'm sure some of you would have some thoughts to say to this. I'm sure my comments might irritate you. I'm even sure my comments might bring forth some emotions. The same goes for individuals who do not identify with the way that we see things. When we call someone by the wrong pronouns and assume their pronouns, we irritate them. We stir up emotions. Some students might take a stand and say, "Excuse me, I don't use those pronouns. Please use these pronouns." But some students won't, and they will sit back and take it, and take it, and take it until they can't anymore. This is why asking the question, "What are your pronouns?", makes a difference. Not only does it allow your students to grow in self-advocacy, but allows them to learn about their identity, learn that they are welcome in their school no matter their identity, and learn that they have a place. If we have students who really get offended by these words, they don't have to answer the question. They can skip it. But while those four words might offend one student for a few minutes, it might also save the life of another student. Lastly, I remind you that putting this policy in place would be asking teachers to assume a student's identity. I ask you to remember what the old saying says. Assuming makes, and, well, you know the rest. Thank you.
Pastor Richard Brown.
Appreciate your patience. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, President Mal Pacom and the board and Superintendent Gall. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Richard Brown. I'm the children's pastor at Radiant Church where we believe in biblical truth. I consider it an honor and a privilege to stand before you today, even though it's tough. You see, the opposition is so strong and loud that it can seem like that's the only voice, but it's not. There's actually a silent majority and the time to be silent has passed. I want to thank Jason and Al and any of you other board members that have today that are taking a stand with truth and are willing to fight for it. Teachers and parents have very different roles when it comes to the children, but make no mistake, they're our children. They're not yours. Your job is to teach the necessary things that will be required of them in business and academic settings, and if a child is delinquent or misbehaving or bad-tempered, we don't blame the teacher for the child's behavior. We don't say that that teacher should have been more firm and disciplined. No, that's for the parents. In the same way, we don't blame the children for lack of education or misguided education. That would be the teacher's responsibility. You guys don't pay the bills, they don't cook their food, they don't give them showers or share in any of the emotional and spiritual development. It is not the teacher's job to counsel them or put ideology in their head. No matter how passionate or invested they are in an idea, it is not their place to decide as a teacher. Now, in regards to pronouns, I like to phrase it another way. If a child walked into a classroom and mentioned to the teacher that they'd been feeling overweight and not pretty, and that the only way they felt better was to ensure that and that they didn't get past the point where they were concerned is by throwing up the food they eat, that they were bulimic, does the teacher affirm the child's feelings and say, "You're absolutely right. If you feel overweight, it's probably because you are and you should continue to be bulimic." No. Obviously, it's something going on that that child emotionally or cognitively, and that needs to be addressed, but by parents and professionals, not the teacher. In the same way, if a child is confused about their gender, we should not be affirming their confusion by having the child seek help as to why they're confused. Ideology and fads like these are a hindrance to society and detrimental to our children. I grew up in apartments across from Mitchell and as a minority child who grew up in a single-parent home on welfare, I can say I'm fully aware of the struggles and issues these kids face. In Proverbs 22:6, it says, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and even when he is old, he will not depart from it." This is in regards of teaching our kids in the way of the Bible instructions, God's Word. But the problem is, the enemy knows this and instead is trying to use the same truth to destroy our families. Some may say, "Well, I don't believe in God and that's not how I want to raise my kids." And I would say, "That's fine. That's your choice, but at least give me the same choice to raise my kids in the way that I want to." You see, the requirement to force teachers to ask students their pronouns may You see, the requirement to force teachers to ask students their pronouns may be inclusive to some, but it's not inclusive for all. It's obvious that choosing one option over the other will have someone feeling left out. So how about meeting in the middle and not forcing it on anyone, not even giving it space for conversation? Instead, teachers do their job and just focus on the teaching aspect. Since the start of public schools in America, that's the way it's been, but in the last few years, on the main stage, something else has been raised that has shown no statistic proof of education gain or betterment of society. Instead, it's caused disunity, so let's go back to just having teachers teach and let the parents decide the values. Thank you guys for all your hard work.
And the last one, Patsy Ruth Crokel.
A teacher is there to teach, not to make students comfortable in their imperceptions, confusion, and weaknesses, in their ignorance. A teacher is there to make them uncomfortable in their ignorance by teaching them what is right and true, by correcting their misunderstandings, confusion, and imperceptions, and by helping to alleviate their weaknesses and strengthen their strengths. The extremely few who struggle with gender dysphoria should not be catered to at the expense of all the other students. Seeking to cater to the struggling few causes confusion of the others who are mentally healthy with absolutely no question about who they are and who their classmates are and what pronouns are true and accurate, not only for themselves, but for the whole of humanity in accordance with human anatomy and biology. Teachers are there to dispel untruths and inaccuracies, not to give comfort in them and not to provide inclusivity for them. Teachers are there to confirm their students in the reality of who they are as masterpieces created by God Himself, and in this case, the reality of their biological sex. Teachers who publicly confirm the confusion of any student for any reason, including the dysphoria of their biological sex and the butchering of grammar, are not only doing that student a disservice, they are promoting confusion in all their other students and contributing to the weakening of society. Legitimizing gender dysphoria by publicly addressing it and seeking to give comfort to the very few, if any, who may question their own gender in their class is absolutely not acceptable in a classroom of normal, mentally healthy children. In fact, I consider it child abuse for this rare and extremely odd and confusing problem to be addressed at all in a classroom of children anywhere. The problem should be kept within the confines of family and family alone. It should not be decided or even addressed in a classroom full of young children. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the end of public comments today. Thank you all for being here this evening, sharing your thoughts and comments. We certainly do appreciate hearing from you. Your feedback helps us better do our work. And that is all for public comments. Moving on, Board member reports. Who wants to go first? Board member reports. I have Director Daniels first.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow is post-secondary event at Doherty from 6 to 8. They have been sending out a lot of notifications and making sure the community knows that they're waiting for you and looking forward to having you at the school, so please make sure you participate and bring your students so that you can learn more about our CTE programs. Also, there is an opportunity to participate in the African-American Youth Leadership Conference that is on March 4th, and it will be at Colorado College. And then we have the Latino Community Conference that's on March 4th as well, which will be at UCCS, and encouraging everyone to attend. And I think, I know that Director Gall will talk a little bit about this, but you want...okay. So, we were invited to...I want to make sure that I get this right, sorry. One of my favorite councils, Special Education Advisory Council, is having an opportunity for the community to visit a student. It's a day in the life of a student, a D/HH, and I believe that's deaf and hard-of-hearing student. And you have an opportunity to walk alongside her, to know what it's like to be a student with disability, or as we're learning to say, adaptive needs. And it's going to be February 28th from 5:30 to 7:00, held at Tesla. And I just encourage everyone to have an opportunity to really understand what diversity, equity, and inclusion is also representing. We have students in our community who are also vision impaired, hearing impaired, non-verbal. I mean, we have needs, and they are great. And we know that that industry or that particular segment of schooling has never been fully funded. So, a nice opportunity to participate in an experience that I, for one, definitely want to have a chance at. And if you have any questions or need to know more, please contact the SEC or...how do you say that acronym? SEAC? SEAC Chair Dana DeHaan, and I'm sure you can find her email and contact information, or contact Ms. Judy Guwagin. Always want to make sure I get her last name right, to learn more about that opportunity on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Nelson.
Today, the Board will be voting to approve the use of funding that accrued due to vacancies during the 22-23 school year, so this school year. And in the past several years, this money would roll over into the fund balance, which is how we've had such a large pot of money to distribute back in October. Rather than sitting on this money, Mr. Gall has encouraged myself and Board members and staff to put it to use sooner in order to benefit students and the district. We recognize that due to the large number of vacancies, many of our staff are working harder to fill in the gaps. We are grateful for your continued hard work. Know that it is recognized. In October, the Board approved over $9 million to set aside towards compensation, which will be part of upcoming discussions that we have on how best to take care of our staff. Under the agenda item for funding transfers, I just want to clarify that while the number for staff support may look small today in comparison to the other categories on this list, this is misleading when decisions that have already been made and conversations to come are taken into account. The Board will take care of our staff. Additionally, I would like to point out that as part of our vote on next year's calendar, we are adding two professional development days that will be paid, which directly supports our staff as we continue to implement strategies to improve academic outcomes for our students. This Board is very intent on rewarding and supporting our staff for their hard work. It will take each and every one of us to change the declining enrollment trajectory and, most importantly, ensure all students receive a quality education. At last night's dinner that the Board was able to have with representatives from our employee groups, a teacher shared the need for our schools to foster a culture of partnering with parents. She sees that students are struggling academically and knows that parents encouraging kids to read at home in the evenings will be immensely impactful. As she shared this vision, I was nodding emphatically. Ever since being elected, I have thought about the need to foster a culture of partnering with parents. Along with the benefit to academic outcomes, it will create trust between families and their schools, which I'd say, considering we have 10,000 kids choicing out of District 11 to other districts or options, is a signal that we have some work to do. District 11 respects diversity of all kinds, including diversity of thought and beliefs. As a district, shouldn't our policy be one of respect for parents' values? The Board will take care of our staff, and staff take care of our students. The staff will support this concept, recognizing that parents entrust us with their children. We must maintain focus on the purpose of District 11 as an institution. We are here, your role as staff in this district is to educate students, equipping them with skills necessary for adulthood. It is our responsibility entrusted to us by parents, charged by the 1787 Northwest Ordinance, that "schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged," end quote. This makes sure we're doing right by students...let's make sure we're doing right by students and families in District 11. We need to improve our academic achievement levels for the majority of our students. Will you embrace this mission? The Board will take care of our staff. Last night, we learned of more ways to support you, and we will follow through, just as last year, we heard that hiring practices were a roadblock to the district, and so we made improvements. This school year, staff received the highest compensation package in district history. These are just a couple examples of what the Board has done. What can you do to better support our students and continue to build trust with our families? How can we improve academic achievement in District 11? I know many already have this attitude, and I'm grateful for it. Just keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bankus.
Thank you. That's a hard comment to come afterwards. I'm sorry. I'm just going to talk and...thank you, because it truly is a partnership with all of us. And I hope that we, as a Board, display that we represent different ideas, different visions, but we all come together with the Board priorities that we have set up. Having said that, I want to go to some celebrations that we've had. We had the opportunity to go to Madison Elementary on Friday for their kindness celebration. And when we talk about working with our kids to make sure that we are giving them a safe, secure environment in which to grow and to learn, Madison did an outstanding job of doing just that. Every class that came through enjoyed one another. They came up to the adults that they didn't know. They were able to...they offered me refreshments, and these two young ladies came up and very poised. It was very nice. I should spotlight them for Mr. Gall to bring them up here, when you get elementary students who are confident enough to be able to do that. And again, I want to be able to share that our schools do have kindness programs that specifically reach that social-emotional part of developing young people into successful adults. Successful adults is a definition that we would all have differently, but a successful adult is someone, in my view, who is resilient, who has self-confidence, who understands that they need the help of people around them, and that they are a help to others. It's important for a well-rounded person to come out of our K-12 system, prepared to go into choices that we've made, and I think we heard it earlier, that choices that we make as children change as we grow, develop, and learn more about the world. And we all have stories about what we wanted to be when we were 10 and 11 years old, or even five. The last thing I want...no, two things. I also got to sit in that big red chair. I got to read to preschool, and they were very good, and I haven't been with preschool for a while. So, the directions were given when I asked my question, "What is it that you want me to know about your school?" They had to do two things. One, the hand had to go up, and the other, their finger had to go on their mouth, because they had hand-mouth coordination, right? I know, I know. Yeah. It was darling. I got to read a book, got to listen to all of them. It was a wonderful opportunity. And if you have gone through our community engagement and filled out the paperwork that says you are a safe-caring person, please do that, and then volunteer to go into the schools and read a book. Volunteer to go into schools and work with kids on their sounds. Volunteer to go into the schools and work with kids to fill that gap that they may have at middle school in getting their science project put together, or practicing in front of you before they go into the science fair. We have lots of opportunities for you to become an integral part, whether you have kids in school today or not, to be part of growing the next generation, and I encourage you to do that. I also want to compliment our SACs, our School Accountability Committees, and all positions are filled. It means that we are incorporating a wider variety of participants who are going to make this district that is going to serve all people. And we keep saying "all," and we mean all. And to your point, I had an opportunity to spend six weeks in training on Gallaudet College, which is in Washington, DC. It's a school for deaf and blind. And to see these college students who are playing football, who are participating in speaking engagements in front of a group with a translator...interpreter, sorry, interpreter. Wonderful opportunities. We have a deaf and blind school here in Colorado Springs that many of you know, and this is an opportunity, as Director Daniels has pointed out, to get familiar with the services that are provided. My last thing is that we do have counselors in our schools. Remembering that the counselors in our schools are counselors that meet our children at a level that is constricted by the confines of our school environment. Anything beyond that, some of our schools have gone out and allowed and worked with in partnership to bring outside therapists on campus so that kids don't have to go anywhere else. We want to make sure our kids' needs are met, and as we've heard tonight, we have lots of opinions on how to make that happen. So I thank you for being here. I thank those who are listening to continue to work together and find common ground so that we can raise resilient, self-confident, talented children. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Gall.
Thank you. I want first to recognize Dr. Teresa Newsom, who I believe works at Martinez, and she was honored by the League of Women Voters as being...she was honored at their Love the League event this weekend for making a difference in our community, and some of that is part of her work with the Black Educators Network and the events that they do in April, which has a free giveaway, their litter fee event, and just being a long-term educator. So thanks to Dr. Newsom. Also wanted to let my fellow Board members know that you are all invited to the first aid and CPR class. The district has a training, and we can take it, and Dr...or sorry, Mr. Richard Os, who is the director or the manager of safety and loss prevention, would love to see you. He essentially passed on that...you should all come down. There's, in the training, of course, all district employees, I assume, are eligible. The trainings are listed for this class, along with other trainings that we receive as part of our emails. Director Daniels and I were at the Casby Legislative Day at the Capitol on the 9th. That was a chance to connect with several of our legislators and remind them of the important details of fully funding education and that school boards should have local control. And finally, it's time to start watching for spring concerts and plays at our high schools and some of our middle schools as well. Mitchell High School students will be performing 12 Angry Jurors on March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at 7:00 PM, and tickets are on sale now. I believe the website is micheldrama.org if you want to get them early. And Doherty also has a show coming up, and I believe North does. So, check your calendars, their calendars, and go ahead and show up for our students' events. They are fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Loma.
Well, I don't have like a board review, but I just want to comment on, I just appreciate everybody who came out to share their thoughts, their desires, on both sides. And it just encourages me, because that's the beauty of the greatest country in the world, where we can do that without fear of retribution. You know, we can share conflicting ideals civilly, and so it's really great to sit here and to watch our country in action. SAC, when I heard the SAC start, you know, I've been on the Board before, and I know when we were, when the first time on the Board, we never could fill our SACs. It was a heavy lift, and maybe it just kind of flew by, but I realized how heavy that is, and I just wanted to reemphasize that that is a tremendous achievement. And, and I just wanted to reemphasize that that is a tremendous achievement. Um, it shows that parents are, are waking up, the communities waking up, and they want to be involved. And so I just was just blessed by that. Like, wow. Um, and, and then you mentioned the deaf and blind. I was a basketball coach with my, on my daughter's team, and she was pretty good. And we played them. And they destroyed us. Uh, they, uh, you know, they didn't talk, but they were like a machine, and, and the ball would move around. I don't know how they did it. I, I really don't. And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, back then, I was, I go, "Well, come on, girls. They can't even talk to each other. Now, and you, you guys, come on." And, and they just beat the tar out of us. That was one of the worst whoopings we ever had. So anyway, you brought back a bad memory as a coach, hey, man? But I, I, again, I'm just thankful for everybody that came out, and that's about it.
Thank you, Director Loma. And I'm going to, I don't see anybody else right now signed up. So while Ms. Olson is pulling up the screen, uh, I'm going to piggyback on Director Bankus. I was with Secretary Bankus at the Random Act of Kindness Celebration at, um, Madison Elementary. So I want to thank the counselor out there, Sandy Kenzenori, for organizing that event and sending us the invite. And all the decorations that you see on the screen, the balloons and the setup out there, were donated by Mr. Nasser and his wife, who are parents out there. So I want to thank them publicly for their generosity. And they even offered to do some, something similar in other schools, too. And I forwarded that information to Ms. Ashby. So, uh, again, the students were really, really excited and delightful out there. And it reminded me, in this day and age, we are quick to criticize and slow to show kindness. These students, staff, and school demonstrated how choosing kindness is not just the right thing to do, but it's the only thing we should do. A lesson that all of us can use, uh, these students show through their actions every day what kindness is. Without going into too many details, um, uh, it has been a difficult few days in a couple of our school communities, as all of us are coping with some loss. And it's a great reminder, a kind word, a simple compliment, or the smallest act of caring can go a long way in bringing healing, turning somebody's day from darkness to light. Choose kindness. I'm trying to progress to the next screen. Oh, I need to turn this on. Okay, and I want to end with this, which was also referenced by, um, Director Nelson out there. This was the employee groups' dinner that we had yesterday. It was a productive meeting with all three employee groups. I want to thank Ms. Olson and D-11 Catering for the room setup and the dinner that was served. Uh, I appreciate all three employee group representatives for arranging your schedule and participating. It was really productive and beneficial discussion and conversation. The Board is making a concerted effort to visit schools, engage with our staff, and observe what's happening on a daily basis. But you staff are the boots on the ground. You get to experience and live it on a daily basis. So constructive conversation and dialogue, like what happened yesterday, it informs us and helps us do our, uh, job better. So I see Kevin Cook in the back out there, Joe Schott, and also Jim Nason from the Exec Pro Group. Thank you all for bringing a group of, um, representatives out there. And what I noticed out here, and you can notice in some of the pictures out here, too, every Board member was actively taking notes, listening to some of the good things that are happening in our district and areas where we can improve service, both to our community and staff. And we got several ideas from you on professional development, benefits for our staff, increasing student achievement and enrollment. And just like last year, you will see it play out in some of the decision-making in the coming weeks and months. We are all in this together for our students, and Tricia Nelson touched on this. And when collectively we lean in and make our students the focus in every decision we make, it is going to help accomplish our Board priorities. Improved, and which has improved student outcomes and increasing enrollment. Again, uh, to our staff who were there yesterday, thank you for your feedback. As every Board member shared, this Board's priority is to take care of our staff while ensuring our students are receiving a rich educational experience. Thank you. Moving on to consent items. Tricia Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items? Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are E2 approval of February 8th, 2023 regular meeting minutes, E3 approval of February 15th, 2023 special meeting minutes, E4 approval of personnel recommendations for February 22nd, 2023, E5 approval of policy GBEBA, formerly, formerly policy GBEB, staff dress, accessories, and grooming, E6 approval of district-wide closure and district-wide two-hour delay due to inclement weather.
Second.
Moved at seconded. Melissa Roethko, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Doctor, or Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Director Loma stepped out.
Director Malpeckum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The consent items are adopted. The next item are action items. The first one is, um, contract award, um, for the Coronado and Doherty High School Track and Field Replacement Project. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item F1?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve Contract C 2023 and 37 to Field Turf USA Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $4,237,239 to start March 1st, 2023, with a contract completion date of July 31st, 2023.
Second.
Moved at seconded. This is new information. Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, Chief, Chief Odom, if you come forward and introduce your team.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Good evening, Board of Education. Before I get started, I would like to recognize on the phone is the contractor, and I'll introduce them momentarily. But with us tonight is the project manager, Mr. Travis Whitley. Um, his boss, Mr. John Furter, who is our program manager for all of our capital program. Bless you. And then the contracting officer that has led this group to where we are today, Ms. Jocelyn Comforman. Um, before we get started, on the phone tonight is Mr. Jed Easterbrook, the Rocky Mountain Regional Vice President for Field Turf, and Mrs. Lisa Rossauer, the Construction Manager. Both Lisa and Travis are here to answer any technical questions you might have after I finish with my overview. Melissa, could you help me get doc cams going so I can show the audience what we're going to be getting as a final end product? Um, but before I get into the overview of the project schedule and the contract overview, I would like to give everybody just a little background. I believe Coronado's track and field was constructed in 1968. That was like over 60 years ago. And Doherty's was in 1973. Could you make it a little bit bigger, please? And there have not been any substantial revisions, renovations done till then. We still have Kentucky bluegrass out there. You know, where the watering and the mowing still happens. Uh, the track is composed of what they call cinder fines. You know, that crushed volcanic rock. Uh, but what we're going to do is replace it with artificial turf. You know Gary Berry Stadium? We had this same company install the project there. So that nice, heavy-quality field, the nice track around it, that's what we're going to get. We're going to have some great, energy-efficient LED lighting. But, um, this, can you get it bigger?
We're extraordinary on that feature.
Okay, that's, so it's not going to be gray like Gary Berry.
I was going to ask.
It's going to be green. That's why I wanted to show everybody. So it's going to be green, beautiful green, with all the numbering, and, and the track is right here in the LED lighting. Thank you so much, Melissa. So let me go forward with the design effort. Last fall, we issued a contract with Field Turf. Field Turf is on a BOSI's contract. It's a co-op. They were competed. That means that the pricing has been determined to be fair and reasonable. They have vetted past performance, and they have been used in various locations statewide and in the district, and I'm going to cover that in a little more detail later on. Um, so the design process conduct, can, included a full topographic survey, soil sampling, and percolation testing. It was performed by a geotechnical engineer, and they use this technique to get a very precise scope of work and design for each of the sites. Um, the Coronado High School construction documents and the design are done. The Doherty is wrapping up. The design is wrapping up on that. So Field Turf is also the installer of this project. So I want to cover what the schedule is going to be like, and it's going to start. If you approve tonight, the first part of March all the way through July, closed, no activities. Everything will be migrated over to the Gary Berry, um, stadium for all activities. So no, activities will still continue. We'll be able to support all the students and their needs. It's just going to be at a different location. Um, if approved, March 13th, we'll start construction at Coronado, and on the 27th, we'll start at Doherty, pending the plan review and approval by City of Color Springs Stormwater Enterprise. Uh, at both sites, construction will begin by placing, you know, safety fencing around, and then demolition and excavation. School sod and track surfaces will be removed and disposed of. Rough grading will begin at each site. And after grading is complete, new drainage piping will be installed. Once the drainage infrastructure is placed, new base materials will be imported, placed, and compacted. Once the subsurface materials have been prepared, the asphalt track will be paved, and the turf carpet will be installed. Once it has cured, the polyurethane track surface will be installed and striped. This leads us to a substantial completion date for both projects of July 31st. After this date, um, we are subject to liquidated damages if we didn't delay the process. But as I indicated, we'll be able to serve those students at other locations. At this point in time, uh, the athletic director, Chris Knoll, has indicated Gary Berry's the location. So a little bit about the contract details. Um, as I indicated, this is a BOSI's competed co-op. The turf field did do the design. The parent company manufactures the turf. And, um, the, the great value of that is that streamlining this provides for a greater warranty on the installation. So if, we've always had problems with that before we found this company. And statewide, it's always been an issue. We've always been looking for some really good company. I was so happy when we found, uh, Field Turf when we did that at Gary Berry in 2019, 2021, summer 2021. Um, they have a great past performance. Um, we've used them at the Doherty Baseball, um, infield in the fall of '22. That was put in place. Turf Field has an extensive resume that includes many Division I and professional athletic fields, and they offer an eight-year turf warranty and a five-year track surface warranty. So we have high confidence in this past performance. The pricing has been determined to be fair and reasonable. And at this point in time, um, all of our terms and conditions have been accepted. The total contract, uh, is being funded with two different funding efforts. The Coronado is going to be an estimated not-to-exceed amount of $2,076,149.90. And that is funded with our, um, uh, MLO fund, the cap reserve, the 2017 MLO. Bless you. And then the Doherty effort is funded with the Fund Balance Initiative that we concluded that process. We went through a very elaborate process, um, in October. And that's going to be funded at a not-to-exceed amount of $2,166,489. So at this point in time, that concludes an overview of the schedule, what's going to happen, what it is going to look like on paper. I'm so excited to see this. When we open school next year, we'll have brand, two brand-new high school fields. And it's really going to bring a lot of state-of-the-art, um, uh, structure and, and, uh, a brand-new field that is going to make those students feel, you know, really competitive, special, like they have really super cool place to, to do their sports. So we've been hearing about that for a long time. That was a big push. Okay, at this time, I turn it back over to the Board for any questions that you might have for the team or myself.
Thank you. Appreciate that presentation. Appreciate all of you being here, too. Uh, quickly, are both of those tracks going to be the same color, the green that you're talking about? Is that the plan? Or is Doherty going to be a different color?
No, so both the tracks will be the same color, which is basically kind of the standard, I would call it like track maroon. Um, and in the fields, we're doing a light green, dark green, every five yards, flip-flops. And then they get to pick their end zones. So Doherty is actually going to have, it's not shown there, but it's, they're going to have a blue end zone with a white Sparta. That was their selection. Then Coronado's is going to be red with white lettering, I believe. And it's just Coronado in one, and, um, Cougars in the other. And then they get their logo in the middle of the field, so. But other, the design is, they're basically twins. It's just the aesthetics are different.
Thank you. And the reason, uh, I was, the amount that you said each project cost, it looks like Coronado cost a little bit more than the Doherty one? And is that because of the prep work, or?
It's, um, almost exclusively the soils on site. So we just kind of lucked out at, um, so yeah, Doherty is the more expensive of the two. And so we lucked out at Coronado. The soil's very good. And we're actually able to keep a lot of it on site and basically sort of rework it, recompact it, and save on trucking that way. And that wasn't the case at Doherty. And so it's just more, more excavation and more import is basically the reason for that. I think it was like 70,000, what'd you say, 80?
90.
Oh, 90.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Director Daniels.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this question is for your team or the athletic team, but, um, two questions. First one, does that include all of the, like, dugouts and the places that people are sitting in, in those spaces? Because that is not leveled. It's not easy to walk in those fields.
So I can tell you, what, what it includes is it includes ADA access from the parking lot to basically the middle of the field. Um, Doherty has a, for D-11, a fairly significant, um, set of bleachers that is going to remain. Coronado is getting a couple small, um, bleachers added to the west side and, um, that Athletics is purchasing. Um, and then the number includes new lighting as well, which doesn't exist currently. So that will allow for longer hours of use of the facilities. And, um, just, it's sort of, in our opinion, kind of future-proofs these new complexes for additional, you know, they, they can sort of serve us, serve different purposes in the future. Um, we tried to, I think, kind of draw the line at, we wanted to include everything that was going to be, um, either cost-prohibitive or, or impossible to do without disrupting our new project. So, um, in, in other words, we didn't, we're not doing bathrooms. We're not, we're not adding big elaborate grandstands. But there's nothing that would preclude us from doing that in the future, and we won't have to disrupt our new facility to do that. So kind of the meat and potatoes of the project, we believe we're getting right. And then everything else is, that's kind of where we drew the line, to keep it sort of within the budget that we had available.
Okay. Do you have a second question?
Yes, the second question is, I know that the teams kept up the fields, football, baseballs, all of them. And that was part of the C-team, also taking care of the varsity team. So once we do this, there will be no need for them to do, you know what I mean? Coming out early, prepping the field, to do the games, and making sure that they win, right?
So I'm actually not aware of that, but I wouldn't necessarily be.
That's why I'm like, I think it might be, might be Mr. Knoll who can answer that question, but the teams were responsible for those fields.
Okay. Okay.
Every time they played. And they were the ones who had to do the upkeep and make sure everything was whatever. So, once we renovate, that will kind of take that off their plates, maybe, hopefully.
Yes, I can, I can tell you, there's a really significant maintenance benefit to us to doing this. Significant water savings, fertilizing, weekly mowing. This is, our four high school athletic fields are, that are currently bluegrass are probably the highest maintenance turf in the district. And they receive the most time and attention. And so, getting to remove two of those from the plates of our landscaping crew is, we on the facility side of house see that as a huge, a huge benefit.
It is, it is a huge benefit, thank you for that. But we're, you know, exhausted.
Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Knoll will find some of the responsibilities for the students.
I bet, so, yeah.
Director Nelson.
I just want to real quick say to any students watching, how cool is it to think about a geotechnical engineer job where you evaluate soil samples? I don't know, that's a new one to me, very cool. I'm not sure if you said this, if you did, I think it bears repeating that all other high schools in El Paso County have already upgraded to synthetic running tracks. So, we're due. So, this is very exciting that now we will be competitive to other high schools in El Paso County. I don't have a question, I have just information to share. As far as Mitchell, we also approved funding for that this past fall, but it is slated for next year, in case folks are wondering, what about the other schools? And then Palmer, we're still kind of strategizing how best to look at that, that school. They have a unique situation. Their, their field is a unique size. So, we're trying to figure out what makes the most sense for them. But just wanted to share that in case people were wondering about the other schools. Thank you guys for the work. It's very exciting.
Director Loma.
Currently, a lot of pro teams are ridding themselves of artificial turf for fear of injuries. And there's a big thing with, with those, those associations, NFL, all those. But they want to get, they want to get rid of them because people are suffering ACLs, different sprains, different life-altering injuries. Now, I know we don't have pro athletes. But that's my only question, so maybe you can speak to that.
Sure. Well, so, part of our, part of what we pay for in the design process is when the field is constructed, they do what's called a GMAX test, which basically is the impact attenuation of the surface. And it's supposed to mirror like what a skull and a helmet would feel on impact. And they have a device that measures that, a third party comes out and does that. And these fields test well below the threshold that ASTM establishes for sports fields, for high school sports fields.
Compared to grass or other artificial turf?
Well, both. They will test every bit as good as bluegrass, if not better. And, but, but the standard that is set, the number that they require, which is escaping me right this minute, is, is for an artificial turf field. But if you took that same device and tested our bluegrass turf field, depending on the time of year, I would put my money on our new synthetic field. And just for your awareness, so what they do is they lay down the turf carpet. But then there is a series of sand and rubber that's placed in multiple lifts.
In the grass blades.
That's right, yeah. And so, it's kind of, the rubber offers the padding. The sand gives kind of the foot feel that they need to play sports on it. And so, it's a delicate balance. And that's one of the things that Field Turf is very, very good at, in my opinion. Like I said, they do, there's multiple NFL stadiums that are, were built by Field Turf and countless college fields. So, I don't question that trend. I, but on the other hand, I have no concern about, we're going to be better serving our, our students and they will be safer on this field than on their current field.
Yeah, well, I know our students aren't, you know, 6'5" and running a 4'40" either, but I can see.
Not yet, maybe.
So, their impact probably less, but I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So, I don't see any further comments up there. Wonderful opportunity for our students, student athletes. These are going to be some of the best facilities that they can compete in. And this is a great opportunity to also get some of our other student athletes that are going to other schools. Now, this is a wonderful marketing opportunity to get them. So, I hope our marketing department, Ms. Ashby and her team can market this program. And maybe we can have a big celebration in August when these facilities are ready to open. So, in each one of them, let's have a opening, opening of these facilities party out there.
Yep.
Are you asking for interval training? We'll be happy to do some. Yeah.
Superintendent Gaul, you have anything more there?
I just doubled down on the comments I heard earlier that the will of the board to program dollars specifically last year for the Coronado project and then to double that down with the Fund Balance Task Force this year for Doorty and then to program forward for Mitchell as well. This is a gap for us in the region. We are late to this game. We are late to this need. We are meeting all state-required safety requirements for everyone to understand. And it will be much more cost-effective for us in the long run to be able to have the durability of these fields. As we are seeing right now, the unpredictability of the weather here has caused a lot of challenges for our upkeep of fields for some time. So, just big thanks to the entirety of the contracting team and the capital budgets team and to our new partners to be able to bring this in to be ready for next school year. And so, for the community listening, two new fields, two new tracks, ready to go. Happy for more expanded athletic opportunities.
Yep. And no more weeds too.
That's right.
With that, roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpakum.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
Ayesha, the contract award has been approved by the board and we look forward to a brand-new field in August.
Thank you very much.
When schools are ready to open. Yep. Moving on, approval of superintendent's contract. Secretary Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item F2, approval of superintendent's contract?
I need, I move the Board of Education approves the superintendent's contract. That's the shortest one I've ever read.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please. I'm not going to.
Director Bankus.
No, 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 I was just kidding about. I'm going to open it up for a little bit of conversation. I just wanted to make it quick, no. Let me set this up first and open it up for some board, board conversation on this topic. And just in full public transparency, usually superintendent's contract, renewal, new contract extension, it's placed under personal recommendation as a consent item. There is little or no discussion about it. But after thoughtful reflection in the interest of full transparency and rebuilding trust in our community, this item was placed under action agenda item for open discussion and conversation. And I hope future boards would consider doing the same. I want to provide some timeline for the community as to what transpired in this process. If you go back to the December 7th work session, Superintendent Gaul provided his performance report. Under the direction of the board, Superintendent Gaul shared that plan. It was a comprehensive report targeting how we are going to improve academic outcomes, support our staff with quality professional development and increase enrollment. Communication and marketing was also discussed. I highly encourage our community to read that plan. In the six years or so I have been involved in the district, with this district, this was the first time such a plan was presented by a superintendent. It's a comprehensive roadmap in D11's journey to excellence in education and service to our community. Clear goals that all of us can collectively work towards to ensure every student has the opportunity to succeed. What that plan brings is accountability. The most important responsibility that elected board members have is to ensure there is accountability in the system through our one employee, the superintendent. And when that accountability is used positively, it will foster excellence, improve performance and a cohesive work culture through that, throughout the organization. And following that performance plan that the board requested, the board performed a mid-year evaluation. This was performed again by the entire board on January 11th in executive session. And again, for the first time, the board collectively held a mid-year evaluation of superintendent in my time on the board. Superintendent Gaul provided his reflections and feedback to the board in that executive session. The board had a productive internal discussion and then we publicly gave unanimous consent to start contract extension talks. In the subsequent month, the board met multiple times to thoughtfully figure out the components of the superintendent's contract, his term, compensation, benefits, compared to what superintendents in similar-sized districts were making and setting some parameters. And when you look at the contract, you will see that this board was fiscally prudent. While honoring Superintendent Gaul's work for his time, energy and passion, we were at the same time financially sound when you compare this current superintendent contract with other superintendents' contract, including the prior superintendent contract in District 11. And I want to also inform that the negotiations went on really smoothly. You always need a willing dance partner, so to speak, for the negotiations to go smoothly. And so, I want to thank Superintendent Gaul for making the process smooth and relatively quick. It was a demonstration also of your commitment to putting roots here in Colorado Springs and turning things around here in District 11. Thank you. And just to give a quick comment on the contract itself, it's a three-year contract extension that the board is voting on today. It brings stability and provides clear direction. When I talk to some of the staff members and community, I hear that feedback. So, the feedback that I usually hear is, is the board going to keep Mr. Gaul around and vice versa, is Mr. Gaul going to stay here? A multi-year contract sends a clear message that we are in this together for the long haul. And the contract itself is not posted on board docs. It is available for anybody that wants it. You can go and request it from Ms. Ashby and she would be able to provide that. With that setup, board discussion. Does the board have? Director Nelson.
I just want to highlight, this is not a full, complete list of all that Mr. Gaul has accomplished in his short time here, what, eight months? But I wanted to highlight some of the things that he has brought to District 11 in that short time. He increased our pre-K offerings for families, created community partnerships with United Way, Pikes Peak State College, American Heart Association. He adjusted hiring timelines, so now we're ahead of other districts and we'll have a wider pool of candidates to choose from. Provided, or created the Mitchell Promise, which helped solve, I can't remember if it was 16 or 18 vacancies that at the beginning of the school year Mitchell had, which is a huge problem. And so, just incentivizing our staff and compensating them for the hard work that they're doing at that school and also providing college opportunities for Mitchell students and creating a partnership for free two-year college. And then most, more recently, he inspired the idea for the energy efficiency audit that we voted on last board meeting with Schneider Electric after going through the regular vetting process. So, just thank you for all the work that you have done so far and look forward to continuing with you.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, just to comment a few things. We found a great gentleman in Mr. Gaul, an outsider, not entrenched in decades of public education, able to think outside of the box with some diverse backgrounds. Just somebody who's, you know, I remember the interview process. He came in and said, what are the barriers that you have to getting this goal achieved? And then said, okay, how do we figure out the solutions to get those barriers gone? And so, you know, hearing that, you know, in his interviewing process of operationalizing our district, working to support our schools from the central office out, I just, I'm seeing it happen already in eight months. And so, I know that comes with some, some challenges to the people that are impacted by such immediate change. And I know that's not easy for everybody to accept initially. But I, I heard a good quote at church on Sunday. It said, there's no growth in the comfort zone and there's no comfort in the growth zone. And so, while we're going through a little bit of a growth zone here, we're going to have a little discomfort, but we'll get to that next level and, and the new things will be before us and we'll be on to greener pastures and on to, you know, taking care of our children and having the best facilities that are safe for our kids and, and staff that are craving to come to D11 because we've got the best facilities, best teams, best leaders and the best districts. So, I wholeheartedly agree with what we're doing here tonight for extending his contract. Thank you, sir.
Director Loma.
One of the things that I was happy to see, I'm an Army vet, right? And I like, I like that style of leadership personally. And so, when I noticed that he was an Air Force guy, I had to get over that because, you know, Air Force, Army thing. But when, you know, to be, to be in the profession he has, the EQ that he needs to be there is top shelf. You can't fly planes, you can't do certain jobs unless your EQ is up there. And so, I figured, although this is a high-stakes, high-pressure job, it's not equal to what, what he did in his past. So, I think that was most appealing and he's proven my assumption right. So, I thank him for that. When we, we first came, came together as a board, we had an employee dinner when we first came in and I applauded our president, you know, because he finally did something right. No, I'm just kidding. And he called us dinner, I go, man, that was a great idea. And the reason it was a good idea is because when we came in, there was so much discontent. It was, it was like, like, whoa, what did we walk into here, you know? And we heard, it was free-willing because the, the chief at the time, you know, weren't there. And so, and they were able to share their hearts and we listened. And I think we did a lot towards, towards that and improving the situation for them. Because we just had a dinner the other night. And you can sense the difference, the different tone in, in that meeting. I think we had, we had built a little bit of confidence. We haven't arrived. There's still some areas that we have to work on. There's still areas of concern. But, you know, iron sharpeneth iron. So, as we keep rubbing and figuring things out, we're going, we're not going to get dull, we're going to get sharper. And I've seen that in the meeting. I think this board went lengths to build trust. And we're still going to try to build trust. But, you know, our, our trust is limited by our, our lack of being able to contact or be in contact with the people. It's only reflected from us by our employee. And, and I, and I thank Mr. Gaul for being a good reflection of what this board is trying to do. Is improve academic achievement, to rid this place of politics and just focus on assisting parents in the education of their children. And if I, if we can boil it down to one line, that's it. And so, as with that, you know, I'm, I'm really happy to, to award him this contract. And so, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Gaul.
Director Ott.
Thank you. I appreciate and applaud that as a district, we are making some significant positive progress, especially on several programs, some of which Director Nelson mentioned. And hopefully in academic achievement. And given that we haven't had very much time to have that, that impact measured has been a concern for me and I would have preferred the board had gone for a second one-year contract. And at the same time, I have some concerns about district culture and where we might be going with that. So, I hope that the board will focus on that in the upcoming year. So I hope that the board will focus on that in the upcoming year, because I think we have some issues. Stability, however, is important, and so that's also part of the conversation here. And all of these things are, you know, in my heart tonight and make this a difficult vote one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, before I ask for a roll call on this, this is a journey to get where we need to get to. And where District 11 was previously and where District 11 is headed, this is our sesquicentennial year, and we want to root ourselves in excellence in everything that we do. And that's a culture shift that we are going to focus on. Status quo is not anymore an option, okay? We got to move in the right direction. We want to be significant and relevant in District 11. As Superintendent Gall says, we are the heart of District 11, and with the heart comes a great responsibility that we are going to be the premier school district in Colorado Springs. And Superintendent Gall, you have put together a plan, and you're off to a running start, but all of us are going to be judged by where we end up in that journey, and that journey is excellent. So I fully support you. This board, hopefully with this vote, will reflect the confidence that they have in you, and I am confident that we will get there under your leadership. With that roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpackham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The superintendent contract, which is a three-year contract, was approved unanimously by this board. And I do have this contract in front of me, and I am going to, at the end of this, sign it. And, oh, you want to sign it now? We can do that too. Yeah. Yes. (APPLAUSE). There you go, it's official now, on the record. Yeah, absolutely. And do you want to say something?
Sure, I'll be brief. I don't think I've changed much of my language since I arrived in May of last year during the interview process. I'm honored, I'm humbled, I'm certainly excited by the direction of the board, with the support and collaboration of staff and community. This team, Executive Cabinet, please stand up. This team is what makes this work happen every day. These are the people that you're hiring for three more years.[791.82][791.82](APPLAUSE). And of course, and to the extension of our school leaders and our teachers and our staff in every one of our buildings, who selflessly, selfishly, and selflessly do the work every day to ensure that on behalf of students, that we continue to achieve as adult learners for students, getting stuff done for students, to become the Colorado Springs School District for students. This is our shared work, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to continue the journey with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting times. And thank you for the Executive Cabinet, too. The hard work that you guys are putting in, it's definitely noticed. I always see, when I visit Ms. Acevedo's office, there are like five people around her all the time, and you are bustling with energy and activity out there. It feels like I'm stepping into huddle in there. So good things are happening. Moving on to the next action item, Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for Could you turn it on? Yeah.
I move that the Board of Education approve the budget transfer totaling $3,399,900.
Moved and seconded. Now, this item was discussed at the special, was it the work session? The work session last week. It was a virtual work session. We had a lengthy conversation on this. Do we have anything new on this, Superintendent Gall?
We do not. Laura Romick's here, do you have anything new to present, Laura?
Nothing new, but I did add those three items at the request of the board.
Yes. Yes, the three items that were discussed at that time, which was the exterior painting at some of our elementary schools, and landscaping at all of our schools at $5,000 per school, and then the safety measure with the sprinkler system that you're talking about. So some of these are curb appeal items, and some of these where the sprinkler item was recalled. And so we are ensuring that our students are being taken care of. There are some great, there are some impactful items in there that is going to directly improve student outcomes and also improve enrollment in our schools. The remodeling of the planetarium at Mitchell, the science labs at Galileo and Swigger come to mind. And the other one is the travel opportunity for our students to go abroad. Students that take Spanish and French, they can visit Mexico for a two-week time in the summertime to learn through the colleges out there. And then the renovation of the DOD auditorium. Those are some of the things that stand out.
And more.
Yeah, and more.
Available on board docs if people would like to see them.
Any other comments before I call the roll call on this? Okay, yeah, it is, I look forward to some of these wonderful opportunities for our students to thrive in, and our staff also get the necessary support. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpackham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The budget item has been approved. Moving on to the next item, Director Jorgensen, this is the proposed school year calendar for 2023-24. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the action, make the motion for action item F4?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed school year calendar for 2023-24 as submitted by the administration.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. This item was again discussed at the special meeting last week. Chief Bailey is here. Chief Bailey, do you have anything additional to add to the discussion?
No, I do not. We did, pardon me, good evening, Mr. Gall, President Malpackham, and board members. Yes, we did conduct an online email request for joint council to vote, and we inadvertently sent it also to the calendar committee members, so they also weighed in. And there we have it. We have no votes from the joint council committee members, minus other than one, and that was on the district side.
Okay, so we don't have a recommendation from the joint council?
No, you do not.
Let me turn this off. And there is nothing further to add from your side? You are still recommending a calendar?
That is correct. This is the calendar that the committee voted to send forward.
The calendar committee?
Correct.
And the calendar committee is made up of all employee groups?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. With that discussion from the board, or comments, questions from the board? Director Ott.
Well, now I'm curious, what was the vote from the calendar committee and what were the concerns of joint council?
There were no concerns from joint council.
Okay, none expressed, okay. And the vote?
From the calendar committee, yes. They voted yes to move this calendar, to move it through the process.
I guess I'm asking what the vote totals were. If a majority passed it, perhaps it doesn't matter. Thank you.
Correct.
And just for clarity, the calendar committee voted to approve this calendar or to recommend this calendar to the board, but joint council had nothing to say? That's what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Director Nelson.
I just want to draw the community's attention to the master agreement, page 21, number eight. On that page, Article 6 states, "Joint Council shall recommend the school calendar each year to the board for consideration. If possible, the board shall establish the calendar by January 20th of each year for the following school year." And then at the top, well, first, so we're a month late on this, and I would like to apologize on behalf of the district and the board. It is not any of our doing. Once the board realized that there was a stalemate occurring due to a separate issue, we asked that joint council be approached again, if they would please do their duty and meet us in the requirements that we must fulfill to our community and our families and our staff. And it's unfortunate that the partnership did not work out as intended and that they have chosen to bring in outside matters that are kind of, I guess, essentially holding the calendar hostage. And at the top of page 21, number three, Article 6, it says, "Matters which are the subject of an active grievance or which are contained in an active negotiations proposal shall not be considered until the grievance or negotiations have concluded." So the matter that is being conflated here is currently in arbitration or will be set for arbitration in August. And, you know, it just is very discouraging to see that the partnership that we seek is not being honored, and it's very upsetting. And I just, I'm beyond words, so I'll leave it at that.
Director Jorgensen.
Just to piggyback on a few things, I expressed my displeasure two weeks ago with us not having a approved calendar for next year when other districts did, especially with our approved calendar not being approved before the school choice window closed, which was February 15th last week. And again, people try to make plans for their family, for their staff, for kids' travels, you know, they would have liked to have seen a finalized calendar before that window closed. So we don't know, we can speculate how much, how many kids we could have lost or gained by having approved calendar by the recommended January 20th date. For frame of reference, on joint council, the membership of that council is made up of five members, which shall be teachers appointed by the association, and that's to refer to the Colorado Springs Association, Education Association, and then five members of which shall be appointed by the superintendent. And so we have a blend of people there, but a majority would need to be had to obviously recommend a calendar to us. So it is frustrating. It is frustrating that we are doing a disservice to our family and our staff by not having a calendar approved and that a matter that's separate, that should have been held separate, got in the way of giving us a calendar on time. And so I am happy that we are getting this done tonight. I apologize on behalf of this board, and we can move on from here.
Any further comments? Director Loma.
A while ago, I asked Greg Exte about our bylaws, and I was just curious how the district ran, and in terms like calendar, and I looked at, I have, what I have here, revised March 1st, 1945, this is the bylaws, but I want the original bylaws, and we can't find those. They're lost somewhere, somewhere. But I really appreciate them finding it, because I just find it so interesting, because when you look at, whatever section on this thing, it says that the board is responsible for these type of thing, calendar, and it has a whole list. This is the whole thing that operated the, this is it. This is what the school district operated on. Here it is. And that's only the master agreement. If you look at the policy book, you know, you'd have to be a brain surgeon to figure out what the heck are they talking about? But here it is, right? And sometimes we get so bogged up in things, and it appears that this whole process got convoluted by stuff that just doesn't matter, you know? There's so many sections, I wish I could, you know, show all the different stuff, but it's good. That's why I have the gloves on, because it's an old document, and we don't want to mess it up with, you know, so. So there's so many things I want to bring out, even when we talk about naming, and I'll bring that out later out of this book. But I'm glad we're taking care of it, and this is the job of the board. It even says here, in 1945, it told us what to do, right? And so I just want to thank Greg for finding it. I think it's a treasure, you know, because he's there with his boxes, there's probably Mo's and everything in there, and to be able to have this somewhere, just so that we could have it, you know what I mean? I think it's great, like that picture of the boardroom there, and this has got to go somewhere, you know what I mean? So anyway, I'm glad we're moving along. I appreciate the work of everybody, all right? But we can't stop the work of the school district because somebody is having a tantrum over stuff that shouldn't be involved in this, right? So to the parents, I apologize for not giving you a timely response. We're over a month late, and we're going to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So you can plan your summer, your vacation, and all those things, teachers and everybody. And so, again, but I do thank the calendar committee for their work, it wasn't in vain.
Okay, thank you. And one thing I do want to clarify, I think this was brought up by Director Nelson previously, we are adding two professional development days to this calendar. Is it?
That is correct.
Yeah.
They are...
Yes, I'm coming to that.
Yes.
Yes. And some other contention out there is that when you look at the master agreement, there is a provision in here in Article 14 that allows the board to add two professional development days, as long as the board can appropriate that money and it's paid.
That is correct.
That is the interpretation, and I think you reached out to legal and confirmed that 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 is...
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm that. And this is a need that our teachers in the district have expressed, that additional professional development days is going to better prepare them for the classroom to be better instructors. With all the new curriculum and Best First Instruction and Power School, and we add more and more to their teachers' plate, and that was even expressed at the employee group dinner, that quality professional development is highly necessary for them. And we will engage with our staff in making sure that the professional development is going to be impactful for them, but this is a need that they have requested over and over again. And the Article 14 allows us to add that two professional development days, as long as it's paid.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's what we are going to do, we are going to make sure that our staff are going to be paid for those two professional development days at this point in time.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I don't see any further comments or questions. Do you have anything to add, Superintendent?
I just want to thank Chief Bailey and the calendar committee for the work that they've done, trying to keep this on track. There have been some obstacles. I appreciate the board in continuing to press the district to meet the needs of our families and our staff. Since prior to my arrival, this has been a board that has clearly expressed investments in teaching and learning, the 30 minutes last year, the new Eureka Squared curriculum, the commitment to Best First Instruction, of which we have operationalized at another level, the purchase of Power School. All these things require that our staff, particularly our teachers, have the opportunity to play with them, to learn, to understand how to get the most out of those resources, and not to feel them as a labor, but as an opportunity. And so we believe strongly that the two professional development days will give our staff the appropriate opportunity to train, to be able to implement with fidelity, which of course is one of our other taglines. And just a big shout out to our Chief Academic Officer, Tamara Acevedo, for helping to lead in the design of what that PD will look like next year, in conjunction with our CSEA reps and our building leaders as well. So this has not been done in isolation. We are excited about the opportunity to get the district back to the original master agreement, 187 days, to ensure that our staff is trained and equipped to be able to do the hard work that lays ahead of us all. Thank you.
Thank you. With that roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Malpackham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the proposed, uh, school year calendar for 2023-24 has been approved by the school board. Moving on to the next item, uh, this is the Scott Elementary School Learning Commons, uh, naming, and we have a follow-up item in Jenkins and I will provide, uh, some context on that. Director Nelson, can you please first make the motion for action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Scott, oh wait, am I on the right one?
Yes.
At the top?
Yes, you are.
Sorry, sorry. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve the, that the Scott Elementary School Library Learning Commons be named in honor of Dr. Lawrence E. Howard, former Scott Elementary Principal from 2003 to 2013.
So I need a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this was an item that came up to board discussion, uh, was a couple of weeks back. It came as a non-action item. This and the Jenkins, uh, naming, both of them came at that time as non-action item. The board had a healthy debate. Some members, uh, expressed support, others shared their concern in the naming area, in naming areas or spaces within a school. The normal followed board practice following parliament, parliamentary rules would be for these non-action items to eventually return to action so we can have a clear resolution on this. And sometimes non-action items are postponed till a later date until we receive the additional information that we need. So I did not, from my end, follow the proper protocol and as a result, there was some confusion on how these two items were left hanging out there. Both items revolve around Policy FF and that policy was also taken to the policy committee. It appeared there, I think a couple of weeks back, uh, and the feedback from that committee was they were not sure what the board wanted done in regards to that policy. And so they kicked that policy back to FF and, um, that is coming, Policy FF is coming as a non-action item currently. And I also reached out to legal counsel and their guidance I received from legal was to bring both items as action and the board provide clarity and resolution on how to proceed. So, and in addition to that, I was able to find some additional information since, um, since then, in the, uh, two weeks since then, and I wanted to share that with the board. Uh, and what happened during those two weeks is I went and looked at prior versions of this policy itself. This policy was revised, uh, in 2018, I think, uh, by the board at that time, so this policy has been there for a while. And one thing that was mentioned to me at that time, that the naming, it, the naming areas and spaces within a school has been on that policy since at least 2012, as far as I can go. And when I talked to Mr. Kaiser, who is kind of the resident historian of the district, he thinks that was in there since his time on the board, 1998. A concern that was brought up by the board was that, um, allowing, uh, naming areas and spaces within a school, it's going to inundate the board with such requests and also inundate Ms. Ashby and her team for the, uh, additional work, um, that is going to take, um, that is going to land on her and the board. But since at least 2012, my understanding and the research that we did is we have received less than five requests. So data and the facts indicate that, um, uh, it is not the case, we have not been inundated with multiple requests and receiving two requests at one board meeting is an extraordinary coincidence, more the exception than the norm. The other thing I also did is I researched, uh, the same policy in several other school districts, not only here in Colorado, but throughout the country. And all policies allowed naming of areas or spaces, uh, within a school and the board kept that authority. The board did not give that authority to individual schools to do that. Ultimately, the board is the one that is answerable, so the board kept that authority. So, and also there are a handful of areas or spaces within a school that have already been named for individuals. My understanding is North, Palmer, Jenkins have some areas out there. So the board has two options out here in front of us. One, we can postpone both of these items until Policy FF is revised and adopted. And then we can come back and vote on both these items with the revised new Policy FF.
You already made a motion?
I know, I, okay. I'm just providing the options right now. I'm not, I'm not asking for this. If they want to make a motion, they can. So the policy, they, they can, I would have to have another motion to postpone it if it is necessary, like we have done, postponing the, um, that, the school, uh, school performance, um, the, the USIP that comes, school improvement plans that come to a later date. But that would be after, to some extent, it is revising the rules after the game has started. These two schools followed the policy that was in place and, uh, if it, if it is the board, board will, we, boards will, we can vote on both of these items right now, up or down, and then go discuss Policy FF as a non-action item for, for the revision. With that, I'll open it up for board discussion. Director Loma.
Well, first of all, I think because it's an on-action, we are obligated to vote it up or down. I think we should just follow through the process.
It is action. It is action.
Yeah, and right, so then we should vote it. Let me read, um, from my newly acquired, uh, manual here. And in the preamble, right, and, and this is the, the bylaws, um, but they can't find the original bylaws, which were adopted April 21st, 1911, right? But this was, so this was made, um, uh, was compiled from the, from the March 1st, 1927 bylaws. But I like what it says. It says, "The Board of Education shall provide education of the highest feasible character for the residents of this district, taking into account," and here's what we're talking about, "the wishes of the people of the district and their ability and willingness to support such a program." Now, we're talking about naming. So when I, I looked at this, I read, you know, you, you see the, there was five members, right, of, of this board. Um, but interestingly, in 1945, the superintendent of the school was, was, um, Roy J. Wasson. And so we named a school after the brother, right? And this is after he died. And so, you know, it's, it's, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to allow any request to come and then make a decision because we're working, we, we want to know the will of the people. To not allow them to, to even ask or just to change it, i- 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 it goes against our bylaws, right? And so I, I really think, um, and we haven't been inundated, but if we were, let, let them come and we'll vote them up and vote them down, um, so, so that we can understand the will of the people. Uh, because if you put a bylaw and say, well, they can't even come up, then, then you're cutting them at the knees and, and I, I just don't like that feeling. So, uh, we, I think it's incumbent upon us to make a vote. If we like the Scott thing, vote it up. If we don't, vote it down. If we like the Jenkins thing, vote it up. If we don't like it, vote it down. And I don't care what happens, right? Um, uh, the board should listen to people, listen to their wishes and make their decision and not change it so that we're free from making that decision. That's all I got.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
I'll just start off with, I agree, we should vote now. I also want to say that at times, our process of non-action to action is frustrating with how slow things move, but this is one situation where I'm grateful that we had additional time because I realized I was wrong. Um, I was under the impression that this was something new to the district when I asked if there are other schools that have entities named, um, the, the, to no fault of the individuals that I was asking, they were not aware of any. So I was under the impression that this was, um, opening us up to something new and a, a path that maybe we didn't want to go down. I think the term I used was a can of worms at the time. But now that I have learned more, that this is historically something that's been in District 11 and, um, like Dr. Malpackham said, have learned about previous versions of this policy and how previous boards handled this situation, um, I, um, am better informed to make this vote and so, um, I am ready to make that vote and am grateful for the time in this case. Thank you.
Director Jorgensen.
Just follow up on the apology train here. I too want to apologize, uh, you know, when we looked at the, the work that they had done two weeks ago, uh, we had seen it for the first time and didn't have that background information. So, uh, I'm also apologizing to the fact that we didn't do our parliamentary procedure of moving from non-action to action. And so, uh, it is here on action as, as it should be and I'm happy to take a vote tonight and, uh, thank you for the work that you did in following our policy. And if we need to do something different, we, we adjust the policy. And so, uh, that's the actions the board are taking and, uh, I think it's good that you, we are humble enough to, to say that we messed up when we messed up. So, um, thank you for the comments tonight and, uh, I'm ready for a vote.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion on this subject, roll call, please. Melissa. This is, uh, for the Scott Elementary naming.
Director Bankus?
No.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so the board approves the Scott Elementary School Library Learning Commons to be named after Dr. Howard. The next one, Director Loma, can you please make the motion for action item F6?
Let me find it. I move, I move that the Board of Education approve that the Jenkins Middle School name can be named in honor of Joe Jorsma? I don't know how.
Shirtsma.
Yeah, that one. That's a weird, that's a hard name.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And this kind of discussion pertains to, uh, the first discussion that happened. Now, Dr. Howard, uh, has been away from the district for about seven, eight years at least and away from Scott for, since 2013. Mr. Shirtsma is an employee of the district currently. He works at Jenkins and will officially retire at the end of, uh, this academic year. With that, Director Loma.
Well, the, the, the problem I have with this one is, and he's probably happy, he's not dead. Or he's, he's, he's still here, working here, you know, he's still here. And it's kind of weird, you know, to have something named after you, still walking around. Uh, and I, you know, me personally, I would wait till, you know, five years. You can't even enter the Hall of Fame until you've been retired for five years, right? And there are certain things that you, you know, you have to be retired or dead and he's alive, praise the Lord, but you know, he has, he's still here and I, I don't think it's appropriate, uh, to name, um, so, you know, anything after somebody who's still working there. I, I would be embarrassed. I would, if I were the guy saying, hey, stop that, I'm still here, I ain't dead. So, uh, uh, that's my concern and so, uh, I, I will be voting against this.
I, I might just help, um, translate. I don't think Director Loma is saying that when you retire, you're, you die. Um, so the point he's trying to make, or that I agree with at least, this is the point I'm trying to make, um, that perhaps we should, uh, or I, I struggle with, um, voting yes on this since the individual is still employed with the district currently and would, as reflected in the policy coming up, we have crafted language to help guide that we would like for someone to be retired for an amount of time until, um, they're, um, not qualified, but, um, able to be nominated for such a, an honor. And we appreciate that this individual has done so much great work for Jenkins and that the community wants to honor him now and, um, that we by no means are disrespecting that, um, individual and the work that he has done and all that he has contributed, depending on how this vote goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments out there, um, Director Daniels?
Yeah, so what does that mean? Do we not vote?
No, we are going to vote on it. You can vote yes or no. Okay, um, seeing no further comments and, uh, one of the things that is weighing heavily on my mind with this vote also, Mr. Shirtsma's definitely made a difference in students' lives, but the legacy for me is that community recognizing the impact that, uh, educator has made after five or six years. It's really, uh, his impact on the community is evident right now, but five or six years from now, if his legacy is sustaining and enduring, then that community would come back and say to us that what Mr. Shirtsma, uh, did in this case has endured the test of time. And that's what we don't know in this case. Dr. Howard's case, it stood the test of time and it was after 10 years since he worked at Scott, that staff and that community came back and said, uh, his work was meaningful. It's, his work had an impact, so, uh, and that will be reflected in my vote as I call for roll call. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
No.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
No.
Director Loma?
No.
Director Malpackham?
No.
Director Nelson?
No.
Director Ott?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, the, this, uh, motion does not pass, so. With that, we've come to the end of this conversation about naming of both of those areas and spaces. Resolution, Read Across America. Director Ott, can you please make, read the resolution for, um, Resolution 2023-19, Read Across America?
Yes. Resolution 2023-19, Read Across America. Whereas the Board of Education, School District 11, stands firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future to academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future and their ability to compete in a global economy. Whereas School District 11 has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday on March 2nd, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students, now therefore be it resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses Read Across America and recommits Colorado Springs School District 11 to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. And a motion, I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2023-19 endorsing Read Across America.
Second.
Moved and enthusiastic, enthusiastically seconded by Vice President Jorgensen. Comments from board members? Director Ott?
Thank you. I'd just like to note that I, I think I sent Ms. Olson a note about this, I can't remember now, or maybe I just intended to. I think in the future, we need to add to this that reading can be joyful and, you know, we speak to lifelong learning. It's not just about, you know, our kids' academic success, jobs, jobs, jobs and the economy. It's also about exploring and learning and there's so many wonderful things about reading and what they, what reading can do for a person. And so I think next year, I'm going to have to make some adjustments to this if it's all right with all of you. Um, and thank you to CSEA for the book donations for our libraries and for your words tonight about the Read Across America resolution because I think that was, that was more along those lines of joy and learning. So I hope you'll all join me in supporting this. Thank you.
Director Bankus?
I would like to, um, support that suggestion. I think that we want to make sure that in teaching reading and gaining those skills, that there is a joy of learning, that that opens up vistas that children and adults can reach without having to leave the comfort of a book in their hand or a Kindle or whatever device. But nevertheless, reading opens up vistas that can be imagined, that we can experience vicariously in a safe environment and it's just joyful. So thank you. I would, I will hopefully, um, compose something, yes, with you.
Thank you. And, uh, I will also enthusiastically support something like that. I was at, um, Taylor earlier this afternoon in the big red chair. I was at Taylor earlier this afternoon in the big red chair and reading to the students. And we were reading about books that journey sometimes to other places. And that's what I was talking about to them too, that sometimes you don't have to leave the comfort of your home, and you can go to magical places like Harry Potter land out there and imagine yourself being out there. So reading is a wonderful opportunity. And I asked all of them how many times, if they read every evening, 15 or 20 minutes, and all of them put their hand up. But they also said they play video games every night too, so I don't know. Hopefully, they are reading, and this is a wonderful opportunity. With that, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So the resolution is passed, and there are a lot of activities in our schools. And the board members got several invites to, to go to several schools to read. So I hope we will be out and about in our schools, reading to our students. Moving to the next resolution, Resolution 2023-20, Women's History Month. Director Daniels, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item F8?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 2023-20, Women's History Month, March. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life, of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas the women of the Colorado Springs School District 11 workforce and volunteer programs have made and continue to make significant contributions to the students of our school district, now therefore be it resolved that March 2023 be designated as Women's History Month in School District 11. The District 11 Board of Education encourages their schools and community to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2023-20, recognizing March 2023 as Women's History Month in District 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments before I call for roll call? Director Ott?
Thank you. Last year, when we did this resolution, I mentioned a woman. So this year, I'm going to mention another one, just for people to research if they're interested in, in learning something new about Women's History Month. Then I have Director Daniels to thank for the introduction to Polly Murray. And Polly was quite a trailblazer in the civil rights movement. And I should say she's the Reverend Dr. Murray, because she had a couple of titles there. If folks are interested in learning more about her, then there is a My Name Is Polly Murray documentary out there from last, from 2021, so, which I have not watched yet, but I hope to. So thank you, Director Daniels. And there are, and as was mentioned in the resolution, there are so many women who have contributed so much and still are. I mentioned the League's Honoree event this weekend. And just being there, for example, was inspiring local women engaged in our community, working for democracy, working for their own equal rights. So I hope all the women in the community continue to step up, because I know many of you do. Thanks.
Director Bankus?
In my sitting in the big red chair, I had the opportunity to read to the kids about Margaret Hamilton. And Margaret Hamilton led the NASA software team that landed Apollo 10. And she was a woman before her time. And the book was outstanding. It had, she loved mathematics. And when I asked the students who were sitting in front of me, third grade students, what their favorite subject was, many of the girls, as well as the boys, raised their hand and said mathematics. And in this particular book that was written for elementary school children, it contained pictures of her doing her math, and her software program that launched that Apollo rocket extended almost as tall as she. And it was a great way for kids to understand that diligence and perseverance pays off, and you can do wonderful things. Her name again is Margaret Hamilton.
Thank you. And before I call for roll, before I call for the roll call, I want to thank the four women on this board. And you are making your own contributions. And 150 years is like a speck in the history, so I'm sure 150 years from now, somebody is going to be holding our, some of the policies with gloves in their hand and saying, looking at it, and maybe they'll be reading your four ladies' name. And so thank you for your contribution and your service to the community. Roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So I, the resolution, Women's History Month, has been approved by the board, and I look forward to some of the celebrations that will happen in our schools. We have one non-action item, policy FF. This item, as I mentioned, I'm going to set this up first to the board. And this item was mentioned at the February 8th regular board meeting during the SCOTT Elementary School and Jenkins Middle School naming, naming non-action items that came in front of the board. And I already mentioned to you that this went to the policy committee, and it was kicked back to the board. So the item that you see on board docs, the red line version and the clean version, was something I put together capturing what the board had communicated at that point in time during that February 8th, some of the concerns that was reflected out there. And we can have a discussion. This is just the initial draft, and then we can send it back to the policy committee with some of the thoughts from the board. Most of the changes that I've taken, I, I have implemented out there is just reorganizing that policy to make it flow a little bit better. So I haven't changed anything very much in the first part of it. It is just reorganizing things so to make it flow a little bit better, moving things up and around. The couple of things that I have added out there was trying to reflect some of the concerns that were expressed in that policy committee itself. One of it, I remember Dr. X talking about in that policy committee, that when the naming committee is appointed, sometimes the naming committee is tagged with people that are going to approve that name. And so a recommendation that comes in front of the board is usually going to be a unanimous approval. That was not the case in this case. SCOTT was a unanimous approval. Jenkins was 7-3 vote that came in front of the board from the committee itself. But to ensure that, that the third sentence out there was to ensure that there is a broad base of support for such a nomination, the language that I added out there is that a community meeting be held, so we can solicit feedback from that community itself. That's one additional language. I did put some timeline in there for the proposals to be submitted, so that if a proposal is submitted in April or May, the expectation is not that it's going to be completed immediately and turned over. I added that nominations can be both individuals that are living or deceased, but if it's going to be an individual that is living, he or she has to be retired for a period of no less than six years. Those are kind of the three additions that I put in there. Most of the other things were already in the policy, just reorganized. With that, I will open it up for any thoughts or comments before we kick it back. And Dr. X, do you have any suggestions? You've looked at the red line version, and then I'll ask Ms. Ashby to, Ms. Ashby, Ms., Debra is going to be the one that's going to be most impacted by this, so I want to get her feedback too, as far as how the policy is. We're at the start.
Here?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you, President Malpackham, members of the board. We, we really appreciate the guidance. I think when we brought it back at the last policy meeting, we were kind of thinking that some direction would be appropriate, and we appreciate the red lines that you've put in there. And we'll take a look at it on Friday. I started to do a little bit of review of it, but I don't have any recommendations at this time.
Okay. And before I come to you, Secretary Bankus, is there anything that stands out to you, Ms. Ashby, in that red line version, if you've taken a look at it?
Sure. The only thing I would ask for clarification on is clarification on the formation of the public
Yep.
Feedback session?
Yes.
And how, how that would be solicited.
Okay. And my thought on that was to have that public committee meeting, and this is just one board member talking out here, have it before the nomination comes even to the naming committee. So this may require some extra effort on part of the people that are nominating a person. So I thought that it adds a little bit more checks and balances in the system, so we are not going to be getting inundated with requests, all kinds of requests. And if a community is seriously interested in honoring educator, then they would reach out into the community. And that happens before the nomination comes to you. That was my thought on it. And the second thing was that if it is at the school level, it's up to the school leadership. And in this case, whoever it is bringing that nomination in would collaboratively work with the building leadership, the principal, to have a community meeting one of the evenings to see, and announce it publicly, and see if we are going to have citizens in that community come and support or be against that item. And the, all those discussions are captured and sent to the nomination committee for your consideration. Hopefully, that answers your question on that. And if it is a district area, somebody wants to name the boardroom after somebody, then it would fall, I think, on your, you know, somebody at the district level would have to have a community meeting. I, I would think. If it's a district property, then it would fall under your, because you are the communications person out there. Okay. With that, Director Bankus?
Yes, I want to thank you, first of all, for the effort that you put into making this as clear as it possibly can be. That took a lot of work, and it sounds like you listened to the discussion that we had and tried to include the comments that were, and the concerns that were raised at the time that this came up. I would direct your attention to number six. Nominations may include names of individuals living or deceased who have made outstanding contributions to the district, community, state, or nation. Names of individuals will be considered only after the individual has retired. I would like to insert "or been deceased" for a period of no less than, and we've had a conversation about 10 years, 30 years. I would like to see what the committee, policy committee thinks is appropriate length of time.
Okay, you want to add retired or deceased?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you still want to leave the retired in there?
Yes, retired and just, and...
Just add "or deceased"?
Or deceased, right.
Okay.
And then the, I would like to hear what the policy committee recommends for length of time.
Okay.
Is five years enough? Is six years enough? Is 10 years enough? I would like some distance.
Right.
I think it's important.
Right. And that was, the years that I threw in there, six years was just arbitrary amount, just to have some distance, like we talked about, Hall of Fame is five years. I threw in six years out there. It's just an arbitrary number, at least to create some distance. And if that person's contribution stands the test of time, then that legacy will be honored even after six years. Director Loma?
My, my only concern, and I agree with everything, I had no problem with it. My only concern, though, I, I don't, I don't want the principal charged with having to create a committee to do this. There, you know, that shouldn't, that's, they got enough work. If, if the people wanted, then that would be their, their responsibility. I, I don't like the, the ideal, because I, I thought that's what I heard, the principal facilitate. I don't think he should, he shouldn't have to be involved at all. Or he can, if he chooses. But to make it a policy that he has to, I, I think that should, should not be part of it.
Okay, thank you. And let me clarify that what I have in there is that whoever is, if it is a teacher or a staff member out there that is nominating somebody out there, what I'm asking for is that they have a community meeting in that school. And when they have that publicly called community meeting, they collaborate with that principal to schedule that meeting. Go through the building leadership to schedule that meeting at 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening. The principal may or may not be involved in it, other than to just collaborate with somebody, instead of just calling a meeting, public meeting, without the principal's knowledge, just collaborate with the principal in scheduling that meeting. Okay? Director Ott?
Thanks. Just kind of a ordering piece. The second paragraph, I think, needs to go below the establishment of the committee. I don't have any, I appreciate the adjustments. It's, it's not a big deal to me, one way or the other, for minute, much of it. But if we're going to say the superintendent receives the naming proposals for, that are submitted for consideration and forward them to the chairperson of the committee, I think that should just come after you've established the committee.
Okay. You captured that? Dr. X?
I did. In our, in our 1945 bylaws, the, the, the board could create a committee of one. Right? So let's commit, let's, let's create a committee of one.
Okay. So it looks like the revisions, you have captured that, that Director Ott asked for moving one of the paragraphs down there, and then Director Bankus asked for some wording in the number six part, number six of it. Other than that, I did not see any other feedback at this time. So hopefully, the process is a little bit quicker and more efficient when it goes to the policy committee, and you have some guidance from the board.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the discussion on this topic. Director Nelson?
So will this come as non-action to the next meeting, or do we need to make a motion to table it until the policy committee is able to provide feedback?
Well, this can come, this can circle back as action in a couple of weeks. With the changes.
It went back to us?
It went...
It went back to us?
Yes, it went back to you, and I...
We would bring it back as a non-action item.
No, it'll come as an action item.
An action?
We can move it as an action item.
Okay.
If the changes are what it is that the board recommended, it can come as an action item if need be, but it can, cannot come in a two weeks' time, is what we are asking. So the next meeting would be March 8th.
Yes, we'll look at it on Friday. The reason I said non-action is we would probably, if you want to see, if the policy committee makes a change or a recommendation, we thought you might want to see that.
Okay, that's perfect. Let's make it as a non-action item that comes back as a non-action item. And if the board wants to move it to consent after, after that, we can do it.
Yeah, during that next meeting?
Perfect.
Make a motion. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity. So this is coming back as a non-action item, hopefully on March 8th. Okay. Request for new agenda items from the board. Oh, I have. Director Daniels?
Thank you. I was just curious, Superintendent Gaul, how the meeting with UCCS pre-collegiate went?
I'm sorry, could you?
The pre-collegiate program for?
I have not had the meeting yet. If, is, is the, would the board like a work session on that?
Well... Are you requesting for an agenda item, Director Daniels?
I did request it a couple of weeks ago, and you said that you had a meeting with them, like, I think, the next day or something?
We did have a meeting with UCCS, but that... We did have a meeting with UCCS, but that topic did not come up.
Oh, bummer. I thought we were
It was not a specific meeting on that topic.
Oh, you told me it was.
I believe I said that we had a meeting with UCCS the following day, and that we sought to bring it up, and it did not come up on the agenda.
Do you think we could, like, maybe find out how the
Provide an email update to Director Daniels.
Well, just to see if we can get involved, that's all.
Certainly.
Director Jorgensen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Thank you, sir. Part of the employee dinner that we had last night mentioned an overload on staff, which I had brought up past in past meetings, I don't know when, a few months back, just, you know, with everything that we're doing, with all the change that we're doing, how much is too much? How, you know, how do we give teachers the, the space that they need to accomplish some of the things that we're asking them to do? And we heard from some people last night, an admin who said, hey, this is too much and for our staff. And he, along with the central admin, was able to say, okay, great, how do we make this at your pace? And so we heard that flexibility on one side, but then heard some other concerns on just the inundation of emails, not only from certain teachers, building admin, but also from, you know, district people, and, and it sounded like it could be overwhelming for some of our staff. So, and a couple of months ago, I had asked about a survey around asking our staff, and I know we're tasking them with the survey then, I understand that, but just saying, how, how are things going? We had had some past discussions around, you know, what can we do to make things better? What do we need to take off of your plate? And then we kind of said, okay, that sounds good, but I don't know if we ever really acted on that. So based on that being a fresh share and concern last night, I did want us to maybe bring that back to discussion to say, are we, can we get some feedback from, from teachers at elementary, middle school, and high school levels? Are, are, what are the experiences that we can try to take off their plate? How can we streamline the change that we're trying to, to do? So we're having, everybody's working hard. How do we have them work on the right kind of hard and, and make that a little bit easier for them? So I'm open to ideas on what that looks like. I just would love to know where teachers' pain points are so that we can then say, you know what, we didn't know, we didn't even know that you were still doing that. We'd love to take that off your plate. Something like that. I know there's probably half a dozen things that are like that for teachers, where you go, oh, you're doing that? Let's just take care of that for you. So I would love for us to look into that somehow.
Okay, a couple of things on that. I think it is already happening right now, and Superintendent Goll can talk about it.
Well, I, I think there's two different things. We are hosting our first teacher forum tomorrow at Swigert. I don't know if that's changed by the, the snow, two-hour delay. It was, not, not yet, great. But I think that's separate. I think Director Jorgensen is asking for like a man-hours assessment of what are the things required in a teacher's day? Because the teacher forum is specifically on the instructional strategies and getting feedback, not on, I have seven duties that distract from my ability.
Yeah, I think it would be more the, the latter of, you know, what is there, are they at capacity or overcapacity with what we're saying? You know, we need a hundred and twenty minutes of reading, we need eighty minutes of math, we need, we need, we need, we need, oh, by the way, go cover, you know, lunch, or, or, no, you don't have to cover lunch, it's your duty free lunch, but then, you know, you've got these hundred emails waiting for you in your inbox, so how do we take care of those? So I'm just trying to see how we can say, what's on your plate in a, in a given week, and how do we try to take some of that off of your plate?
So I'll ask Tamra to expand the conversation to ensure that folks don't feel overloaded. And just as additional commentary, it had come back to the staff today when talking about the teacher forums, that we had not extended appropriate compensation for teachers to stay afterwards to give that feedback. And so then we approved that today, that teachers, for their extra time, will be paid for those teacher forums. And then next year, we'll seek to find a way that as we're looking for teacher feedback, it isn't outside of the normal day that it costs the district extra money. But we wanted to be respectful of the teacher's time to ensure that if asked for more time, they are appropriately compensated.
Thank you. I would just ask you to close that loop when you get that feedback to let the board know. Be great, thank you.
Yeah.
Be a good start.
Yeah, it'd be good to get that feedback. I, I think you're going to have several of these teacher forums, right? Not just one at Swigert, you're going to have in every area?
Yeah, we, we have two per area for the rest of this year, and then we'll seek to be even more regular than that next year.
That's fine. And if you can circle back in May or June with a summary report for the board as to what you gained from that teacher forum. And I think Director Loma talked about the stop button even at that thing. And I see you're still highlighted up here.
No, I didn't, no, I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. I wasn't sure if that's what you're going to talk about, the stop button that you mentioned.
Can I bring that up now? I didn't know if
No, no, you, if you're making a request.
We talked, we, we did talk in detail with the employee groups, and they mentioned some areas where they feel it's over burdensome. And, and I said, well, then my question to them was, okay, if we remove some of that burden, will it improve academic achievement? And give me some details, you know? So then I, I talked about the concept of having a stop button. Well, give me, give me some items that you think that are hindering your ability to teach, because you can complain all you want, but if you don't give me nothing, then it doesn't help me. And, and so that was just something I threw out, because to do the best work, those who are doing or closest to the work often have the best answers. What happened, the best teachers normally rise at the top, and sometimes they forget where they were at and make decisions based on what they see from the top down. So that was something where we get some feedback. We can't promise change, but at least we'll get a, get a, get a pulse from the teachers, ESP, exec professionals, because there's got to be, it's just like the lights, you know, we're energy efficient and we're becoming more efficient. In any bureaucracy, organization, after so long, even though this, this thing says we're not a hundred and fifty years old, well, that's another topic, but inefficiencies are created. And a lot of times, you don't know it. I tell, I tell people, if you, if you stay in a cow pasture, pasture long enough, you won't smell the cow dung, you'll just get used to it. And sometimes, you know, you're in a, in a situation long enough, you don't see the inefficiencies anymore. So that was my thought. I think it'd be a good, good exercise, at, at least. But there are areas in, in any organization, especially this size, that some things should just be stopped. So that was my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. I think maybe that's a conversation you can have with Superintendent Goll, and then see where we can go with that.
And just for the board and for the community, as we are building next year's budget, one of the items that we built in was operational efficiency, which is a different form of how do we ensure that, you know, what we, what we call two steps to the basket? If you can't say within two steps of how this impacts one of the board priorities, then maybe it's something we need to stop doing. So we're asking the chiefs in their IBR, their initial budget, incremental budget requests, to identify those. One, to ensure that we're not just adding money and adding programs, but make sure that our folks are, have the coherence and alignment on the strategies that the board has heard and approved. Well, I wouldn't quite call it ahead of the game. I like the stop button, because sometimes just simply there's too much for me to do, what's the priority? Having every employee and work group having the ability to provide that feedback will be helpful for us to understand where the opportunity for those efficiencies exists.
Yes. So moving on to calendar review, March first, we have a work session, and the items on the agenda right now is the academic master plan. The CTE part of it is going to be discussed at that career technology, and it'll be Ms. Saavedo and Dr. Mendel's work. And we also have the surveys coming back. I think that's going to be the panorama survey. And are we going to be talking about the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey too, Dr. K? Or do, okay. So it's all the discussions about the surveys that our students do, are given at the school level, SEL surveys. So those are the two items that are on the agenda for March first at this time. March eighth, we will have a board meeting, and we'll go on from there after that. With that, and before I make a motion to adjourn, there are two items that I want the main takeaways from this. One, we did approve the field turf for Dordie and Coronado, that's going to have an impact on our students. And more importantly, we approved the contract for our superintendent for the next three years. And that was a unanimous approval. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it? We are officially adjourned at nine twenty-five P. M.
Please drive safely in the road.